Okay, now I can call to order March 5th, 2024, meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Nelson.
Here.
Supervisor Williams.
Here.
Supervisor Capps.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
And Chair Levinino.
I'm here. Please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item of business is the approval of minutes from the February 27th, 2024, meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we need one minute, I'm sorry. We've got a little technical issues today, so we're gonna move a little slower. Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Hartman, a second from Supervisor Nelson. Let's take a roll call vote, because I do need to, I was absent from that meeting.
Supervisor Nelson.
Aye.
Supervisor Williams.
Aye.
Supervisor Capps.
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman.
Aye.
And Chair Levinino.
I will abstain. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or changes to our agenda today?
Chair Levinino and members of the board, I do have a few announcements this morning.
Go ahead.
We received a request from the sponsoring supervisor to continue administrative item number one to the April 2nd board meeting. Administrative item number one is a resolution to be presented by Supervisor Levinino honoring Ted Sten upon the conclusion of his service on the Santa Barbara County Board of Retirement. This continuation can be added to the balance of the administrative agenda. In addition, I have a quick announcement to make on administrative item number eight. Administrative item number eight is from the county executive office. It is to consider recommendations regarding an appointment of the Public Works Department Director prior to board action on administrative item number eight. In accordance with Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3, the Public Works Department Director's salary information shall be summarized verbally. Effective April 1st, 2024, Chris Sneddon's biweekly salary will be approximately $8,624. Additionally, we received a request from the department to withdraw administrative item number 25 from the agenda. Administrative item number 25 is sponsored by Supervisor Nelson. It is to approve the appointment of David Ketteler to the Behavior Wellness Commission, term ending January 1st, 2027, and this withdrawal can also be added to the balance of the administrative agenda. Lastly, for the Board of Supervisors, methods of public participation and to provide public comment on general public comment or an item on the board's agenda, please see page two of the agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on page two. If you have any questions, please contact the Clerk of the Board's office at area code 805-568-2240. Again, that number is 805-568-2240, and that concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you very much. Do we have a CEO's report for today?
No report this morning, Chair.
Okay, that takes us to our administrative agenda. Next item of business, administrative agenda. Would any board members like to pull any items from the administrative agenda? Supervisor Hartman?
A7 and A16.
Seven and 16? Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, I'd like to pull a, or speak on A7 and 16, but I would also like to pull 19 and 21. I need to recuse myself from those two.
Okay. Supervisor Williams? Nope.
Sorry, just hit my mic.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do we have any items to be pulled from the public?
Chair Levinino, members of the board, yes, we have requests from the public to speak on administrative items number four, seven, eight, and 16.
Okay, are there any items that we are not pulling? That would be, that would be the balance. So I'll now entertain a motion to approve the balance of the administrative agenda except for the items that have been pulled, four, seven, eight, 16, 19, and 21.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're gonna go to resolutions to be presented. We'll come back to the balance to those items that were pulled in just a moment. We will move to administrative item number two. Madam Clerk, can we please read that into the record?
Chair Levinino and members of the board, administrative item number two is sponsored by Supervisor Capps and Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution designating March 2024 as Women's History Month in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today, we have Kathy Odell and Nikki Parr. And if you can please join us at the podium. And I will go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the month of March is recognized as Women's History Month and International Women's Day is on March 8th, 2024. And whereas the month and day are a global celebration of the economic, cultural, social, and political achievements of women. And whereas we celebrate and highlight the invaluable contributions and triumphs women have made in our community. And whereas the county of Santa Barbara wishes to uphold the achievements, educate on the challenges, and provide more exposure to the rights of women and gender equality and equity. And whereas the gender gap in power and leadership remains entrenched both locally and globally. An additional $360 billion per year is needed to achieve gender equality and women's empowerment across key global goals. And 54% of countries still lack laws in all key areas of gender equality. And whereas Women's Economic Ventures is a champion of empowering women, dedicated to uplifting and supporting historically marginalized communities to identify and address barriers to achieving economic success. And whereas in the last five years, Weave has assisted 2,100 local women entrepreneurs and their businesses, creating 6,000 jobs fueling the local economy, equipping women with the tools and education to launch and grow a thriving business, and setting the bar for what is possible for women to accomplish in our community. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors declares March Women's History Month and March 8th as International Women's Day, and is especially grateful for Women's Economic Ventures, who so boldly lift up and empower the women of Santa Barbara County, passed and adopted today.
I'd do accept this on the behalf of all the women in the community, and particularly the entrepreneurial women that Weave serves, as they continue to bring their new business concepts and ideas to the fruition, to add to women's history. You know, we go back looking through women's history and see how many things that we all interact with every day that we didn't know were invented by women. Like the washing machine and the windshield wiper. And, and actually, it was a woman who first discovered laser technology for cataract surgery. And we know that someplace amongst all of the women we serve here in Santa Barbara County, there are those with other new compelling ideas, and so we thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Go vote.
Supervisor, Supervisor Capps?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank our speakers, and I love the focus on economic empowerment, because it goes hand in hand with discrimination, with poverty, with all of the things associated with the strives that women still need to make. It wasn't too long ago where a woman would have to have her husband sign in order to get a loan. All of these things are still things that we need to fight for, and having Weave right here in our community for so long, doing such amazing work, has helped so many men and women and so many children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this takes us to the administrative items that have been pulled by the board and the public. We'll take up the administrative items pulled in numerical order. Madam Clerk, can you please read administrative item number four into the record?
Chair Levinino and members of the board, administrative item number four is from the Auditor Controller's Office. It is to consider recommendations regarding the renewal of a contract with Brown Armstrong Accountancy Corporation, Brown Armstrong, for the county's annual financial audits. And we have one request to speak on this item from the public, and we are gonna go to Chuck Williams here in Santa Barbara. Chuck?
Hi, I'm Chuck Williams from Old Town Orchid. I'm representing myself today. And I wasn't gonna speak on anything on this, but I come across this in this agenda. And this sequel guidelines removal, removal for commitment to specific projects which may result potentially in significant physical impacts on the environment. And there is a specific project that, that this would apply to in Old Town Orchid, and it has to do with a roundabout, and there is significant impacts with that. And I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'll speak again at the, the next item. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, let's go to item A7, please. Could you read that into the record?
And Chair Levinino, members of the board, would you like to get a vote on this item or take them all together?
Go ahead. Can I get a motion on A4, please?
Second. Yeah.
Moved by Supervisor Hartman, seconded by Supervisor Capps. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Takes us to A7.
Chair Levinino and members of the board, administrative item number seven is from the county executive office. It is to adopt a resolution to amend the 2024 Board of Supervisors' schedule of meeting dates and locations to add an additional meeting at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, to conduct a housing element rezone workshop to be held in the Planning Commission hearing room. And we have one request to speak from the public on this item.
Okay, I think Supervisor Hartman also pulled this item, so why don't we have Supervisor Hartman go first, and then we'll go to the.
Sure. Well, the first thing is, I'm very excited about this workshop. We did have a previous workshop where the board articulated criteria that they would like to see in project proposals as we consider the rezones. And this will be the opportunity actually to hear from developers. The way it's scheduled, as I understand it, it's simply to look at South County. Given that I represent certain areas in mid and north county, however you define it, I would also like to include or invite those who would like to to present at this meeting. So that's my first plea. And my second is that UCSB is also providing about 750 units. And if they could be invited to attend, if they'd like to, to describe those in the schedule, when, what kind, what, what, how they envision that unfolding, at which economic levels, that would also be great.
Okay, Supervisor Capps?
Thank you. I'd like to echo the request for UCSB, which is, as we all know, a linchpin to our housing challenges right now, to be part of this meeting. I'm really glad we're having this meeting. It was a suggestion that came, I believe, from the League of Women Voters of more transparency, so that developers who are seeking rezones from us, they get, there's awareness from the public about what kind of promises are being made, what kind of plans they have that will affect all of us. So I appreciate this hearing and look forward to it.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Levinino. I understand the concern that this might be just a South County, the way it's designed right now, and I wanted to address that for a moment. I understand that down the south is a very different situation than we have up north. Down south, there's a lot of difficult choices to be made. In the north county, we're fortunate enough to have a significant inventory and not the same level of demand. In the, in the north county, we haven't necessarily had the same level of advocacy and sophistication that has gone with many of our projects, hiring consultants to come and put together projects and presentations. And what my concern about now at the last, you know, lately, late in the process, asking them to present, would pit some of the really good projects at a disadvantage that haven't gone out and hired those consultants, the government affairs professionals to promote their project to the board. As Supervisor Hartman pointed out, that she also represents North County as well. But all but two of the North County projects are in my district. And so I'd ask, if we want to go ahead and do a North County presentation, that we give maybe the North County projects, maybe an extra month to get that, start to get that together, because, but that might impact our timeline as well. So I'm okay with it. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm just saying that, so we don't put many of our North County projects that have not been informed that this would be the process that they would go through. I'd ask for more time for them, if that's, if that's route the board would wish to go through.
But you don't have any concern if somebody wants to do it, that has a project that wants to?
I, I do. I think that we should give them the time, so it's a level playing field for all the North County projects.
Well, I only know of, okay, well, let's go to Director Plowman.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, a month delay would delay the ultimate conclusion of the rezone process. And I, I would not recommend that.
Okay.
But certainly the board's option.
Okay. Well, let's go to public comment.
Chair Levinino and members of the board, we have one request to speak from the public on this item, and we are going to Zoom with Michael Stoltley. Michael? And Michael, there you go.
Good morning, esteemed members of the board. I'm here to speak on behalf of Keysight 26, which was included in the housing element voted on December 5th, 2023. It has come to our attention that only projects within the housing element in the South County are invited to the rezone workshop. And we would like to request that our North County site also be invited. We believe that our project has valuable components that lend itself to being rezoned, and we would appreciate the opportunity to partake in the workshop. Alternatively, if we are not included, we would only have the standard three minutes to speak about the merits, merits of our project on the day of the rezone hearings. We respectfully request that our project be given the. We respectfully request that our project be given the same opportunities others in the south. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Well, it's to the board. How does, how does anybody want to proceed? I, I'll just say personally, I mean, I think he's going to come to the meeting anyway and speak for three minutes, and then have his thing outside, so I don't know why we just don't give the extra seven minutes.
I guess my concern is that none of the other north county projects that all asked about this have been told at this point that it was going to be a South County hearing. So it pits all of them at a disadvantage to that one project. And that's one project that's also, at the same time, has an application to be annexed into the city of Santa Maria. So it's, I'm not inclined to give that, that project special treatment versus the rest of the, you know, I don't know, 30 north county sites that are out there. Again, if we needed, wanted to give the north, the rest of the projects in north county time, that's great, but it's going to delay the whole entire process. I think the choices that we have to make in the north county aren't about necessarily the bells and whistles of a project, but because we have a lot of options and not as much of demand, we can look at things like VMTs, public resources, neighborhood compatibility, as prior higher values than some of the choices you're going to have to make down in the South Coast. So that's why, as somebody who has a majority of the north county projects in my district, I didn't ask to have, as we call it, a beauty contest, because I didn't think we needed it, because I thought there was a lot of other good criteria out there for our board to make some good decisions. So I'm not in support of adding the north county without an extension on this presentation.
Okay, well, Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I'm very eager to have the Bailey Avenue project presented as well. And I'm eager to see what, to understand better what the north county projects are like. If people are invited, and I can't see saying you can only have three minutes and others can have 10, it seems only fair that those who would like to present are given that opportunity. And if people don't want to, that's fine, too. It's not as, it's not as competitive in north county, but I'm still very eager to see what the projects are being proposed.
I don't disagree, but I think we need more time to be fair to those north county projects, so--
Well, it is two weeks away, and you said if it's a month, a month would have been okay, but two weeks. I just think if you've got, look, I didn't like doing this whole thing to start with of an outside meeting, but if you're going to do an outside meeting for purposes of, you know, allowing more transparency in that, to tell somebody that they can't present is, I just don't think it's good policy.
One additional question, and that may be for Supervisor Hartman or Director Plowman. So the Bailey Avenue one, that's not up for rezone, though, or is it? Because my understanding that, and with that, so projects that have, that weren't up for rezone that are just builder remedies projects, are they also going to be presenting, too? I mean, does that, because that opens up kind of the floodgate as well of projects that we might be presenting that day?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, that site was not up for a rezone, so it is not actually included in our housing element. So we had not anticipated them making a presentation.
So I--
It is a builder's remedy project. Yeah.
Supervisor Capps?
Yeah, I just, I think that the projects in the north should be given the equal time. Maybe it doesn't have to be a month, but maybe that's something that staff can just work out of a schedule where we tack on at the end, like we're doing on the 19th, a special meeting. Maybe it's only a half hour long or something. I don't know. I just think that Supervisor Nelson raises good points of fairness, and I also would like to hear more about these north county projects.
Mr. Chair? Supervisor Williams?
So I, I think we should not delay, and I think we should make a decision to either hear them all this day or not. And, and the reason is because we're already, we in our heads have eight years to produce this housing. It's starting to be more like seven years. And if we don't produce it with the milestones, then we lose zoning authority. And so I just think it's pretty important to use every block of a few weeks, and I know it's been very difficult, you know, for the chair and the clerk's office to be able to schedule this in the first place. So I think if we're going to have north county folks present, it should be at this meeting, just because we've got to do it, and I'll hunker down. I think the 10-minute thing is a really good, happy medium, because it's shorter than an appeal hearing, but longer than public comment. It's, you know, whoever came up with that idea, I think, was, was smart about format. And so whoever that was, thank you for doing that. And I, you know, I do think that everybody should get a chance to do it. And if everybody's going to get a chance, it's going to be that date.
Okay, Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, so, again, I think it's okay. You know, that was an afternoon I wasn't going to be here. That's why it was scheduled that day in the afternoon, because I wasn't going to be here in the afternoon. So again, I'm, if this was what the conversation we wanted to have back previously, and we wanted to kind of let them know that there would be a beauty pageant for the north county projects as well, I'd have been okay with that. And I still think that's okay. I don't want to delay it. You know, I guess if you guys want to move forward with that, you know, I'm not going to kick and scream too much, but I do think that it gives a single project a little bit of a disadvantage, a project that's probably more unique than any of the other projects combined because of the political entanglements that that project has. But I guess, you know, ultimately, the conversation is going to be the five of us in early May, and I'm hoping that we are thoughtful and maybe not necessarily use the same type of criteria on that day. That's the important day, really, for me, not necessarily this one. So I'm okay with, if you guys want to hear that one, it sounds like that there's votes for that, and I'll move along, but ask for some consideration when we get to that point in May, because I do think that there's a lot of balancing. I mean, that's a tool, that's something we call in the tool, a balancing that we've been trying to do up in the north county to make this work and make sure that the right projects get built at the right places. So, thank you.
So I would move that we include Tuesday, March 19th into our hearing schedule, and that we invite UCSB to present if they would like to, and that we invite any north county projects that are part of our housing element to also present at their discretion.
All right. And Director Plowman, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so you have a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Williams. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, perfect. That takes us to Administrative Item Number Eight.
Chair Lavenino and members of the board, Administrative Item Number Eight is from the County Executive Office. It is to consider recommendations regarding an appointment of the Public Works Department Director. And we do have one request to speak from the public on this item, and we are going to remain here in Santa Barbara with Chuck Williams. Chuck?
Thank you once again. I am not a big CEQA fan, but I really don't like it when it's being misused, and this is a situation where it could be misused. And it's a long story, and I'm not going to go into it, because you guys have already been down this road, and it involves the Orchid Oasis Senior Center. This roundabout is being put in because of that senior center--
Chuck, I'm sorry, this is--
I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's get there.
Okay. This project is going to have, it's going to have trucks and cars and tractors and school buses and, and parents hauling school kids. And you think that road is not going to, that roundabout won't need maintenance for all of these pieces of equipment? I am absolutely opposed to this being approved for that particular project. And we've already spent, we're already spending $2 million on this project, so--
Okay, just for the public, just for the public, this is considered a recommendation regarding an appointment of Mr. Chris Sneddon as the Public Works--
I will make a recommendation. He's a great man.
All right, well, good.
Thank you.
Hey, we finally got there, right? All right, we got there. And then I think, I think another thing that is, might be confusing to some people is, we do have, on our agendas, they do talk about CEQA. And County Council, can you sway in on why we always say that CEQA, that this is not a project under CEQA, so that folks don't pull every item when it mentions CEQA?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we added the CEQA language a few years ago to items to just make it clear to the public which ones have an impact on the environment, or such as this one, Item A8, where it's just an administrative activity. So it's just a clarification and information for--
So on clerical and administrative items like that, we, we call out that CEQA, that this is not a project under CEQA. I don't think nominating Mr. Sneddon as Public Works Director is going to affect the environment too much. Who knows? Jury, jury might still be out on that, but congratulations. All right? So can we get a motion to approve Item A8?
So moved--
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Nelson, seconded by Supervisor Hartman. All those in favor enthusiastically? Aye.
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 Scott, I think you have to leave the building now. That's-- Round it up. All right, Item, Item A16, please.
Chair Lavenino--
Time out.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, just to note for the record, my apologies, there was one vote missing after I hit Record, so it only looked like four members of the board voted for that item, but it was passed by unanimous vote of the board, so my apologies on that. We will now go to Administrative Item Number 16. This is from the Public Works Department, is to consider recommendations regarding an agreement for services of independent contractor for the Santa Maria River Levy Bike Trail Project, County Project Number 862372, and this is in the 5th District.
Okay. When we start with Supervisor Hartman?
So I pulled this item, and I just wanted a progress report or update what's happened between when this board approved the 1.5 million and to date, and how you see it unfolding.
Sure. Good morning, Supervisor Hartman through the chair. So the project has completed the initial stages of the preliminary engineering, so we've completed the survey and the right-of-way surveys along the levee. We've completed some conceptual 30% plans just for use in the environmental documents. There's still a long way to go to detailing out the plans and working with the stakeholders. We've incorporated the components at Bonita School Road into the bridge project, so there'll be a undercrossing in the bridge project to accommodate a potential future path. And we've had several meetings with stakeholders, including the Corps of Engineers and the farmer representative groups and some other community members, just to get initial feedback on the project and inform how we move forward with the process of developing the project. This item will get the EIR going, so that there's a lot of studies that will be involved in that, and we'll continue the stakeholder process throughout that, that to address not just the environmental issues, but the other things that need to be worked out for a project to move forward. And the goal would be, over the next year, to complete the EIR and move the project along to where we have the input considered from the stakeholders and kind of built into the project, so that it's positioned for potential future funding.
And what interactions have we had with the Corps of Engineers about this so far?
Supervisor Hartman through the chair, they won't, we've had meetings with them and informal discussions about feasibility and about some of the constraints. And they, they don't give formal responses, but there aren't, there aren't things that would make the project infeasible. There are just our constraints that you would have to work with, within to get permits for a project like this. But there are trails on levees that are core levees throughout the country.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lavenino. As we do the environmental study, my understanding, I mean, and CEQA, the ag resources is an area that's to be studied. Can you tell me that ag resources will be studied and be studied thoroughly? Because I do think CEQA documents are supposed to inform the board of impacts, and I think we should be very clear and eyes wide open on what those impacts are if we, if this board ultimately goes through with permitting and building that trail.
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, yes, there is a, there will be studies of those impacts through the environmental impact study process. I think the other thing we need to be mindful of is there are impacts that there may be that aren't specifically CEQA impacts, but might be regulatory or other impacts that we need to look at as well. So we'll be working with the Ag Commissioner and other stakeholder groups to see what those impacts are as well.
I guess my last question was, I know one of the requests that I had was that we did the survey work and the engineering work in advance of, you know, spending too much money out for this project. My understanding is that we still don't have access along the entirety of the proposed project area, that some of this is private property. And at this point, we haven't had much success in acquiring that or working with the property owners. I'll just say right now that that's my concern with moving forward, is spending another $300,000 if, to get to a point that, you know, we might be stymied in the end. The million and a half that we've committed from the county was to mitigate a previous environmental impact and impact to recreational opportunities. I think there's a lot of great other recreational opportunities in the north county, but there's always not enough funds. So I really want to husband these funds as best as possible to make sure that we're not spinning them if it's ultimately going to end up at the dead end. And so could you give us a status of acquiring or, or actually getting access for the entirety of the proposed trail?
Sure. Supervisor Nelson through the chair, I believe you're referring to the west end, where there would be a connection point into the city of Guadalupe. And the sort of sequence of project development is to get early preliminary plans and then go do the environmental process. That has to be done before we get into the phase of looking at utility coordination and permitting right-of-way, those types of things. So getting the project defined and studied under CEQA is the first step, and then the next step would be to pursue any right-of-way acquisitions or other utility work or things like that that need to happen.
So, so once the environmental document's done, we'd go through that process after approval of a project, or can, help me where that fits actually in the timeline?
Sure. Supervisor Nelson through the chair, the, after, if the, once the board certifies the environmental document, that would begin the process of looking into the acquisition.
And what's the timeline on that?
So the environmental document should be done in the next six to 12 months.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a public speaker on this? Madam Clerk?
Chair Lavenino and members of the board, yes, that is correct. We have one request to speak from the public on this item, and we are going to Zoom with Claire Weinman. Claire?
Good morning. Confirming you can hear me?
Yes, Claire, we can hear you. It's very quiet, so if you could just speak loud and clear, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, branch voice, copy that. Good morning. My name is Claire Weinman. I'm the president of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. We still have some major concerns about the project's underlying fundamentals for that specific use in that specific location. We would love to see this funding invested in north county that's a better fit and that there are many worthy projects. We are very concerned about the project description being utilized and the importance of this very early on. If the project does move forward, we would like to ask for closer coordination, more so than it has been for this specific item, and to pursue the Cadillac-Tesla design option for the extensive concerns with the conflicts that it would create. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Claire. Can we get Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Chair Lavenino. I think Ms. Weinman brings up a good point. So when you look at the projects and the project alternatives, I imagine you're looking at, I guess, where are we at with the project description? Is it what was agreed to at the board previously with the, it was more robust, as Claire called it, the Cadillac or Tesla version? Is that still what we're studying as the preferred alternative?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, yes, that's the general starting point. And then, you know, the EIR will call out specific mitigations, if any, that would have elements that would need to be included to mitigate. And then there may be other elements that would be added or modified based on working with stakeholder groups and direction from your board.
Well, I think a lot of those ideas that, you know, Supervisor Lavenino had pointed out at that hearing are good opportunities to mitigate the impact ag resource-- out at that hearing are, are good opportunities to mitigate the impact to ag resources, which so is, if those start to go away as project alternatives, then I think that we even need to get more robust and the impact to ag resources and get deeper into there. So I hope that that's not the route we go down. So I'm going to actually abstain at this one. I'm still concerned about access and fully having a bid out project before we move forward spending these funds. So I'm not going to stand in the way, but I'm not going to move forward today.
Supervisor Hartman?
Move staff recommendation.
Yeah. I just want to make a real quick comment that I am kind of where Supervisor Nelson is. I mean, I want this thing, I want to see it move forward, but just because it's such a, such a delicate area where that path is, then there's so many interactions with ag that we have, this has to be done right if we're going to do it. And so I'm on board for the full Cadillac model and, but if we get down to where, you know, we start taking elements away, for whatever reason, whether it's cost or, or it could be a myriad of other reasons, I'm going to be very challenged to support it. So we have a motion by Supervisor Hartman. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Supervisor Nelson?
Abstain.
Is abstaining.
Chair Lavignino and members of the board, my apologies again. I think those technical issues will just continue throughout our day today, but let the record reflect that that motion was passed with four yeses and one abstention from Supervisor Nelson. Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to item A19.
Supervisor Lavignino, I'm actually going to recuse myself on that. So I go ahead before they read it into the record.
Okay.
For the record on A19 and A21, there are two vendors having to do with Tejigas that were donors of my campaign more than $250. So out of abundance of caution, I'm going to go ahead and abstain and leave the room for these two items. I previously had another item around Tejigas that I actually refunded some funds of a donor so that I could vote on the item. I just, I just became aware of this yesterday, that this conflict. So not having enough time to do something else about it, I'm just going to go ahead and recuse out of abundance of caution on these two items. So I think that satisfies my requirement, county council. All right. Thank you. And if for some reason that my vote was needed to further this, I would make sure I did what was proper to actually have the item moved or delayed so that I could participate. It's always my priority to vote on things and not to have to recuse myself. But we've got some new rules in place and unfortunately it hits me on this one. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Nelson's left of the building. So can I, can we read in 19 and 21, please?
Chair Lavignino and members of the board, administrative item number 19 is from the Public Works Department is to consider recommendations regarding an agreement for services of independent contractor with Deani Building Corporation. And this is in the 3rd district and there is a fourth this vote required on this item. Additionally, administrative item number 21 is sponsored by the Public Works Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding an agreement with Pacific Petroleum California Inc. for hauling and storing Resource Center waste liquids. This is in the 3rd district and there is also a fourth this vote required on this item.
Okay.
Move A19 and A21?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Hartman, seconded by Supervisor Capps. All those in favor of 19 and 21?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Chair Lavignino, members of the board, the way our system is set up, if we can also get that second motion on A21?
Move A21?
And I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously with one recusal. Boro. Okay. I think that got us through our administrative agenda. Takes us to general public comment. Now's the time for members of the public to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on general public comment?
Chair Lavignino, members of the board, yes, we have 12 requests to speak in general public comment today.
Okay.
And we will begin here in Santa Barbara with Chuck Williams to be followed by Sherri Foster. Chuck?
Well, good morning once again. Chuck Williams representing New California State. I like to think this board wants free and fair elections. Unfortunately, they are not. There is now proof our elections have been manipulated for the last 30 to 40 years. You've already heard some of that proof. New California State has access to other groups in 52 different counties, working throughout California on this corrupt 2020 election system. Can this board please tell us how and why this voting system was approved, signed off, and why it is not corrupt? You can continue to be part of the problem or you can be the solution. It is really up to you guys. I do want to see anyone, I do, I do not want to see anyone on this board go to jail over this election because clearly you have not been properly trained on the Dominion voting system or voting laws. February 27th, 2024, paraphrasing Shelby Bunch stated in an open board meeting with Riverside County Supervisors, the Dominion Voting Machine Operating Manual Setup Instruction says, "Voting machines cannot be set up without first being connected to the internet." Our short three minute public comment periods are not enough time for these important issues. This board is protected from liability to a certain point in time. But when, when we try to explain these serious election crimes to you, you blow them off because you don't want to hear, you don't want to know about the system. You lose that liability protection, making you all open to be sued by anyone. I've sat here a few times, but last week I saw Supervisor Hartman sitting there with her head down and eyes shut, almost snoring. We are, we are trying to help you with this terrible situation. Serious crimes have been and are being committed. You cannot certify another election without forensic audit. Corrupt voting system 2020 algorithm also show Gavin Newsom lost the recall election. Salud Carvajal lost the election to Andy Caldwell. Restraint with, with time limits to speak? We cannot tell you the devastating problems. We are requesting a special public session with this board and Sheriff Brown. The known facts today do not justify your certification of the 2020 election. We call on you to correct this mistake that is devastating America. Decertify this fraudulent 2020 election, the election that is destroying this great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We will now go to Sherri Foster to be followed by Marcia Wertz. Sherri?
Yes, Chair Lavignino and the board, I did request six minutes to speak today. I don't know if I have that time.
Ma'am, we were going to go down to two minutes because of how many speakers we had, but we'll give you the full three minutes.
Sorry. My apologies, Chair Lavignino and members of the board. I did not notify our chair in advance. That was an ADA request, so we will be providing six minutes today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to be starting with a reading from Romans 4 from the NIV Bible, verses 21 through 31. Righteousness through faith. But now righteousness from God apart from law has been made known to which the law and the prophets testify. This righteousness from God comes through faith in Jesus Christ to all who believe. There is no difference, for all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God and are justified freely by his grace through the redemption that came by Christ Jesus. God presented him as a sacrifice of atonement through faith in his blood. He did this to demonstrate his justice because in his forbearance he had left the sins committed beforehand unpunished. He did it to demonstrate his justice at the present time. So hast to be just and the one who justifies those who have faith in Jesus. Where then is boasting? It is excluded. On what principle? On that of observing the law? No, but on that of faith. For we maintain that a man is justified by faith apart from observing the law. Is God the God of Jews only? Is he not the God of Gentiles too? Yes, of Gentiles too. Since there is only one God who will justify the circumcised by faith and by uncircumcised through that same faith. Do we then nullify the law by this faith? Not at all. Rather, we uphold the law. And now I need to make an announcement. Yesterday, the Supreme Court, this is from the Gateway Pundent article, the Supreme Court ruled 9-0 to put Trump back on the Colorado ballot, unanimous decision. And it states, "The U.S. Supreme Court on Monday unanimously ruled Trump can stay on the Colorado primary 2024 ballot. The Supreme Court said the states lack the power to enforce Section 3 of the 14th Amendment to the Constitution against presidential candidates. For this reason given, responsibility for enforcing section against federal office holders and candidates rests with Congress and not the states. The judgment of the Colorado Supreme Court therefore cannot stand." The high court ruling said. And now I'm going to go to our, my sample ballot. Okay. I have always been registered as American Independent, so mine is green. But as you can see here, voting for the U.S. President depends on the political party preference you are registered with. I'm registered with qualified political party. If you are registered with one of the following qualified political parties in California, you may only vote for that party presidential candidates, which means, because I switched to Republican so I could vote for President Trump, I received an AI ballot and then I received this ballot once I changed to Republican because he was not listed on the American Independent ballot. This is the problem with having the American Independent Party, the Libertarian Party, the Democratic Party, Peace and Freedom Party, Green Party, Republican Party. So it's like it segregates all these political affiliations to where it should all be on one, it should all be on one ballot. And I'm saying that basically it should only be we, the people, who should be allowed to vote no matter what our party preference is because it is discrimination. And when I took my ethics course last year, racial discrimination is defined as unfavorable treatment of people because of their race, prejudice, and discrimination can be directed at traits other than race, including sexual orientation, age, gender, ethnicity, religion, and national origin. Discrimination based on any of these can be a violation of law or policy. A prevalent, almost invisible kind of racism is institutional or structural racism is an equal treatment that arises from the way organizations, institutions, antisocial systems operate. The people who work within such systems may and may not be racially prejudiced, but the systems themselves cause racial discrimination and inequality. Respect for persons and justice are two fundamental moral principles. Respect states that each person has equal inherent value regardless of social status, power, prestige, and racial and ethnic identity. We fail to respect people who inhibit their freedom of choice, speech, and action, violate rights, coerce, or enslave them, discriminate against them, or use them to achieve an ends that is not their own. Justice says that equals must be treated equally and fairly. That is, people must be treated the same unless there is morally relevant difference between them and they must get what is due to them. Strong affirmative action illustrates that many conflicts about race, racism, institutional racism, and discrimination that arises from it. It is the use of policies and procedures to favor individuals because of their race, gender, ethnic background.
Ms. Foster?
It is a kind of preferential treatment.
That is your time. Thank you.
That's your time, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I'm going to close the balance of public comment. So there'll be no more adding on anybody after the original 15 speakers.
We will now go to Marcia Wertz to be followed by LeAnn Woolover. Marcia?
Good morning, everyone. Marcia Wertz, Santa Barbara County resident. And I'd like to start with, to just say, well, good morning to everybody and everyone here today. I'd like to just say happy election day, right? So everyone get out there and vote and all of you at home, get out there and vote. Don't forget to submit your, submit your votes. So I'm speaking today on behalf of Philip Gallanders. He's Santa Barbara, excuse me, let me raise this just a little bit. Santa Barbara County Vice Chair for the state of New California. And I have a few documents here for the Board of Supervisors. Would someone like to take the handles to them, please? And the subject is regarding New California State declarations. Supervisor, Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. This cover letter is being made available to you and your colleagues on the Board, on the Board of Supervisors to give you a deeper and wider understanding of the vocal presentations made to the Board by several members of the Santa Barbara Committee, the state of New California. The document attached is, is the complete 12th Declaration of Default issued by the state of New California to declare specific failures of the current California government. This Declaration of Default is the 12th Declaration to be proclaimed, and it follows 10 declarations of truth and 190 grievances over recent years, over several years. These documents have all been publicly proclaimed, proclaimed by New California State members in front of the state Capitol in Sacramento, county, in front of county courthouses, in front of county buildings, and in front of city halls throughout the county and throughout the state. Thus publicly declaring to New, to California State and county officials the grievances and positions. The documents have declared the continuous failure of officials of the state of California and counties of the state of California to uphold their constitutional oaths of office to protect and defend the people of California from invasion and to protect the people of California with a republican form of government. Given the many failures of the state of California, it is the desire of the people of the 52 counties which will comprise the state of New California to follow the U.S. Constitution, Article 4, Sections 3 and 4, and to join the compact of the United States of America and to become free citizens of a free state as the 51st state of the Union. Sincerely, Philip Gallanders, Santa Barbara County Vice Chair, State of New California. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
We will now go to LeAnn Woolover to be followed by Barbara Ireland. LeAnn?
Good morning, board. I need to put this up now. Good morning, board. My name's LeAnn Woolover. I am the Chair and a Senator of the state of New California for Santa Barbara County. Dear Board of Supervisors, I'm writing to you on behalf of the organization of New California, Santa Barbara County to inform you that many of the people who reside in the county of Santa Barbara would like to see the process for the elections for Santa Barbara County take place in one day consisting of paper ballot elections and to eliminate the use of the electronic voting machines. New California, Santa Barbara County has gathered roughly 860 signatures from registered voters who reside in the county of Santa Barbara and want one day elections consisting of paper ballots, elections, and to eliminate the use of the electronic voting machines. In addition, the paper ballots would be counted the same day. Attached with this, these letters to each one of you, well, the letters is the ballots, the original ballots that we are going to be giving you here. The residents of Santa Barbara County who have signed the petitions for in-person, one-day paper ballot elections and the elimination of electronic voting devices clearly want to see a fair and cost-effective election process by going towards one-day paper ballot elections with the same day. elections with the same-day ballot county will ensure the integrity of the election process and shall provide transparency. If this Board has any questions, I would like, I would be more than happy to meet with any of the supervisors and answer the questions that you may have. Thank you.
We will now go to Barbara Ireland to be followed by Rosalie Hardwin. Barbara?
Morning, Board of Supervisors. I didn't come prepared to say anything this morning, but I do want to say that I support my friends here with the election integrity that's so very important, and I strongly believe in paper ballot same-day voting. Thank you.
We will now go to Rosalie Hardwin to be followed by Michael English. Rosalie?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. It is the right for each county in the United States to make their own decisions about how they tally votes for their elections. A woman named Linda Rance from Osage County, Missouri, traveled to Louisiana after hearing about an effective system that they created for hand-counting votes. She in turn has created a handbook on how to go about setting it up. She brought the details to the Clerk and Board of Supervisors in Osage County, who agreed to replace the voting machines and tabulators with the hand-count system. On April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in Osage County, Missouri, the residents were introduced to the new hand-count system in their statewide election. Instead of watching their ballots being inserted into a machine that has been proven to be hackable and that a large percentage of the population of voters distrust, they instead dropped their ballots into a secure ballot box at each precinct polling place. They trusted the teams of both Democrats and Republicans who volunteered to count their ballots at their neighborhood precincts in the open at the same facility where they voted. After doing a little research, Linda Rance found out there was another county in Missouri called Worth County that has been utilizing a hand-count system there for the past ten years. Missouri isn't the only state taking action to get rid of voting machines in their state. In addition, Cleburne County in Arkansas also made the decision to return to the old-fashioned way of counting ballots after it was determined that voters no longer trust the voting machines, which have been proven in court to be able to change votes. These voting computers and tabulators are in fact connected to the Internet as well as to the, as well as the electronic poll iPads, which are used to check in voters at the polling places. All of them can be manipulated fraudulently without visual detection. This is why we must cancel our county's contract with Dominion election machines, tabulators, and electronic polling books. This is essentially why we need to go back to one-day-only hand-count precinct voting with voter and citizenship ID required, as well as the final results proclaimed the night of the election. We need to do away with massive mail-in ballot, with the massive mail-in ballot scheme that was forced upon us during COVID, as well as eliminating the unsupervised drop boxes. Colonel Conrad Reynolds from Arkansas stated, I quote, "The machines do not read the names on the ballots. Instead, they scan barcodes which humans cannot read. They also utilize proprietary software that we are not allowed to examine. This all means voters cannot verify that their vote is being counted properly as mandated by state law," end quote. On January ninth, two thousand twenty, top executives from Dominion Voting Systems, amongst others, testified before Congress.
Thank you.
The question asked of them was if voting machines were a hundred percent--
Ma'am, Rosalie. So we're going to follow the rules here. Okay? You have three minutes. Thank you.
We will now go to Michael English to be followed by Amy Blair. Michael?
Hello. I'm Michael English with the Santa Barbara Voting Integrity Project. Today, I'd like to draw your attention to the ineffectiveness of our voter registration system. The U.S. Constitution requires that only citizens have the right to vote. The Santa Barbara County Elections Office has told me that they rely on the Secretary of State to verify citizenship. Yet, according to the California Secretary of State's website, the voter registration card you signed under penalty or perjury declaring that you are a citizen is the only citizenship proof requiring, required for voting. If no one is verifying citizenship, we do not have a representative government. In two thousand sixteen, California certified VoteCal, a multimillion-dollar statewide online database to track voters between, as they move between counties. Though incomplete and unreliable, it has evolved an additional capability, creating online voter registrations. The DMV and a couple of California cities use VoteCal in this way to automatically register people, and if you're not careful, this will happen every time you make records change. Such registrations are fed directly into each county's voter registration database. There are also seven non-governmental agencies that also use VoteCal, left-leaning nonprofit organizations that are effectively super PACs like Next Gen America, Rock the Vote, and TurboVote. There's also corporate participants like left-leaning Trilogy Interactive LLC and Conic Incorporated, which was fined five million dollars in January of this year for leaking L.A. County Election Office information directly to their counterparts in the Communist Chinese Party. Most of these organizations are based out of state, and all of them have direct access to our state's voter registration system. Once a voter is registered, it is very difficult to get them removed, taking at least eight years to remove a voter whose mailings have been returned undeliverable. I've personally canvassed dozens of homes in the county and been surprised at how many active voters no longer live at their registered address or have passed away. Our vote returns show massive signs of manipulation since we started using, sending out mail-in ballots universally. I shared with you previously how fraudulent mail-in ballots can easily and legally be authorized, and now you can see how cheaters can create a vast pool of voter registrations to use for fraudulent voting. Without a voter registration database like the one the Board authorizes funds for, the cheaters would have no fuel for that kind of manipulation. I urge you to defund the use of voter registration databases and steer our elections towards requiring both residency and voter eligibility verification in person with transparent and auditable vote counting in full public view at the polling places.
Thank you. We will now go to Amy Blair to be followed by Lisa Sloan. Amy?
Good morning, Chair Lavignino and honorable Board members. If President Abraham Lincoln said in his Gettysburg Address that this country's government is of the people, by the people, for the people, then that means that you all have been elected by we, the people, to represent us, and we demand better representation. So here we all are, here we all are. Will you represent us? Will you listen to our concerns with election integrity? Will you take our suggestions seriously? Because as you will be hearing today, we have plenty of suggestions that we would love for you to consider. We see the concerns of the people being embraced in other places like Shasta, Georgia, Arizona, to name a few. Can you please help secure our concerns here in the incredible Santa Barbara as well? We are required to show ID for any number of things, purchasing tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, visits to the doctor, hotel rentals, house rentals, car rentals, fishing and hunting licenses, purchasing firearms. I even need an ID when I just drive a car. If all of these common activities in life require me to show ID, surely it cannot be considered disenfranchising anyone to require ID when we vote. To say otherwise flies in the face of all of these other things I listed. One might say that those things are not constitutional rights like voting, but that is not correct. The Constitution declares that we have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and all those things fall in that category. When the vote results show such significant signs of potential manipulation, it is all the more critical to ensure that the right to express our voices through elections are securely proper, are secured properly. Mail-in ballots have introduced such a distance between the voter and the counting of the vote that the chain of custody is impossible to maintain. It is time for us to return to an in-person voting and to verify that the voter is who they say they are by showing ID, just as we have to do in any number of the other important matters that I listed. I urge you to defund the use of voter registration databases, which are used in place of requiring ID, and steer our elections toward requiring both residency and voter eligibility verification in person with transparent and auditable vote counting in full public view at the public polling places. Thank you.
We will now go to Lisa Sloan to be followed by Grace Wallace. Lisa?
Good morning, Chair Lavignino and honorable Board members. I'm Lisa Sloan, a thirty-eight-year resident of Santa Barbara County. Like apples of gold in settings of silver is a word spoken in right circumstances from Proverbs twenty-five, verse eleven. The circumstances we currently face are the positioning of China's hackers on American infrastructure. FBI Director Christopher Wray recently warned Congress about a range of threats against the United States, including heightened terrorist risks after the October seventh attack on Israel. Long before this warning, during the two thousand twenty national election at eleven P.M. on November third, I remember seeing votes in Pennsylvania subtracted from one candidate and added to the other live on CNN. A clip of this event was recorded and can be seen in Professor David Clement's documentary, Let My People Go. In November two thousand twenty-two, when I went to observe ballot processing, a Santa Barbara County elections official responded to my question about system vulnerability that, no, the Dominion machines are not connected to the Internet. However, as I mentioned during public comment on February thirteenth-- I'm going to mute myself, sorry. The current contract with Dominion requires in Appendix D that the vendor provide a minimum of two million dollars in cybersecurity liability insurance. Why would this be required if the system is not vulnerable to hacking? California's Shasta County Board of Supervisors, as well as over two hundred counties nationwide, have tossed out the machines in favor of single-day hand-counting paper ballots with photo ID required in a grassroots movement to restore voter confidence. Would Chair Lavignino consider changing, consider the changing circumstances and put an item on the agenda to evaluate the benefits of hand-counting paper ballots for our next election? An added benefit would be the revenue savings because estimated manual counting costs are less than two dollars per ballot compared to estimates of eight dollars each for Dominion. Indeed, to celebrate the revenue saved, we could display a centerpiece here on the dais with the proverbial apples of gold in settings of silver. Thank you so much.
We will now go to Grace Wallace to be followed by Margot Hammel. Grace?
Let's see if I can work this fancy desk. Good morning, Board, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I came here today because I wanted to show you that I have two ballots. So again, just like the other lady said, what's to stop me from voting both ballots?
The barcode on there is what's stopping you. If you try to put both of those in, they're not going to count both of those, only one.
Okay. But do we really have that confidence in knowing that?
I do.
Also, also, but thank you, I appreciate that. Also, my son came over, and he brought his ballot, and he said, I'm not going to vote, Mom. So now, what's this? I have a third ballot. The system of smelling these out is crazy because there's so many ballots that's out there. As I was making phone call, phone banking for the, those that's running for office, on a page of forty-three numbers, thirteen was relocation, disconnected numbers. I talked to people in other states, what about all of their ballots? Who are voting those ballots? Those ballots are just loose and out there. Thirteen out of forty-three. So I would like to recommend that we go back to one-day same voting. Same thing with my son. If it was one-day voting, this, I wouldn't have this ballot in my hand right now because he would have went same-day voting, I wouldn't have this ballot. So I would like to recommend that, and also I would like to recommend that we have a meeting, that we have a meeting, sit down and talk. What's wrong with sitting down and talking, getting the information, and looking at the evidence? What's wrong with that? And so that way, people don't feel like their voice doesn't matter because they don't, in three minutes, they cut off. So we, I would like to encourage the Board of Supervisor to please hear our cry and to stop this mail-in ballots, all this going on, and to find time to meet with the American people or Californians or Santa Barbara people. And also, the public have lost faith in our system. My three ballots are why, but he said there's a barcode. But what about the thirteen that was sent that's out somewhere with wrong numbers and people that's in another state that's left California? So I would like to recommend one-day voting and that we have a meeting where we could sit down and talk and present the evidence to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go to Margot Hammel to be followed by Erin Christian, who is our final speaker. Margot?
Margaret, thank you. Hi, Board. I'm also with the same-day hand-count vote people. It's pretty, it's a confidence in our election system. It's critical for the functioning of our society. When COVID appeared, people were afraid and willing to trust our government to do the right thing. While the use of mail-in ballots may have been necessary to alleviate those fears until a sense of safety could be restored, that condition no longer exists. At this point, the way that COVID was handled in general has created a large sense of distrust among many, and the continued use of universal mail-in ballots perpetuates and grows that sense of distrust. We've been disconnected from each other, and it's important for our local government, which was a significant participant in creating the disconnection, to also be part of reconnecting our community. There was a time when we all came together on Election Day with many volunteers to help with the administrative aspects of performing an election. The elderly were always especially helpful with those administrative aspects. This served an important social backbone which needs to be strengthened once again. I urge you to do what you can to build back our community by defunding the use of mail-in ballots and the centralizing tallying machines that keep us disconnected from each other and suspicious of the outcomes. Steer our elections towards requiring both residency and voter eligibility verification in person with transparent and audible vote counting in full public view at the polling places. Do I still have time? Yesterday, it's, sorry, February twelfth, the Georgia State House voted one hundred sixty-seven to one to pass a bill requiring all ballots have official watermarks on them to prevent counterfeiting. This simple step would eliminate a big method of the cheating that happened in Fulton County, where multiple election workers swore they saw Fulton County count thousands upon thousands of fictitious Biden ballots in two thousand twenty. That lawsuit is still ongoing in court. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will now go to our final speaker on Zoom, Eric Christian. Eric?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Thank you. Eric Christian, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. I just wanted to take a few moments to go back over a couple of resolutions the Board has approved in the last number of months, both pertaining to project labor agreements, which is something the Board has approved recently on construction projects funded by taxpayers. We've warned you what this is going to mean to increasing costs and reducing your bidders. On the seventh of November, you adopted a resolution honoring R.W. Scott Construction, Vince Lopez, Jr., and Sons General Engineering for jobs well done with regards to, I quote, "Local contractors, R.W. Scott Construction Company, Vince Lopez and Sons General Engineering, both were respected family-owned businesses based in the Santa Maria Valley, responded to the county's emergency request for assistance when larger contractors did not, postponing previously scheduled work a great inconvenience to undertake the monumental task of clearing over one million cubic yards of accumulated sediment and debris and reshaping over four miles of riverbed before the November first, two thousand twenty-three deadline." That, those are two companies that will now not be able to bid under the county's project labor agreement because of the implicit and explicit discriminatory provisions of that PLA. Last month, the Board chose to recognize the Strauss-Wind project, whereas the Strauss-Wind project was proud to employ skilled union labor and contractor sports construction, and then it went on. I find this ironic because another way that project labor agreements are implemented is through the abuse of the California Environmental Quality Act. We call it green mail instead of blackmail, sequel abuse. call it green mail instead of blackmail, sequel abuse, in which South San Francisco Bay Law Firm, in this case, California Unions for Reliable Energy, appealed and appealed over and over again this project moving forward until the owner quote-unquote agreed to a project labor agreement. Then supervisors Williams and Hartman saluted these workers for getting work that they only were given because the bidding process to have this project go forward had sequel abuse employed against it and thereby harming not only the meaning of sequo, but the owner's ability to build this project in a timely manner. For two years, they appealed this project, and only when they were extorted into signing a PLA did a PLA get put into place. And yet, a resolution was put forward awarding the fact that this had gone to union workers. Union workers get work all the time, as do non-union workers. Under PLAs, the non-union workers are being discriminated against, and PLAs should not be, especially when sequel extortion is put into play, should not be rewarded with resolutions that seem to single out only certain workers for glorification and for acknowledgement, in this case, union workers. Union workers who got the work because the owner was extorted into signing a PLA. So those were two resolutions that the board has brought up in the last number of months, and I just wanted to highlight how these are both intertwined in the issue of project labor agreements and the irony of both of those resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that closes public comment, and we will take a 10-minute recess and come back for departmental item number one. read departmental item number one into the record?
Chair Lavignino and members of the board, departmental item number one is from the Planning and Development Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Erickson appeal of the County Planning Commission approval of Verizon Wireless at Camino Mallorca, case numbers 23 APL 40, 22 DVP 23, 22 CDP 146, and 19 VAR 222, which consists of an appeal of a director-level development plan and concurrent coastal development permit and the Associated Board of Architectural Review application to allow the installation of a new small cell wireless facility on an existing utility pole located within the public right-of-way of Camino Mallorca, and this is in the 2nd district. And Chair Lavignino, members of the board, before we proceed, I do have two documents that we received after our noon deadline on Friday, March 1st, to be voted into the record and accepted. The first is a public comment letter from Sarah Erickson, received Friday, March 1st at 1:30 PM, and the second is an additional public comment letter received from Jean Turner on behalf of Hildegard Lagerquist, and that was received Saturday, March 2nd at 9:49 PM. And again, if we can get those two items voted into the record...
Can I get an motion to accept those items?
So moved?
Second. Moved by Supervisor Hartman, seconded by Supervisor Nelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will bring those into the record. And since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, we will call also for ex parte communications. Does anybody have anything that we need to report?
I have no ex parte communication.
Neither do I.
Oh, yes, I do. My staff and I did a site visit with the appellant and her father on February 28th. My staff met with Representative of Verizon also on February 28th, and I discussed with my planning commissioner and the planning and development staff.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
I met via Zoom phone with the applicant last, or with the appellant last week. I have not met with the applicant, though my staff have asked questions.
Okay, and I have nothing to report. So we will be following a time-certain presentation list here. We'll start with the staff presentation. You have 10 minutes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, today I have Willow Brown, who is the planner on the case that's been appealed. We have Joe Dargle, supervising planner, and Travis Seaworth, deputy director. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown to make her presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Willow Brown. I will be presenting the Erickson appeal of Verizon Wireless at Camino Mallorca. The project is located in the right-of-way of Camino Mallorca, adjacent to 6897 Trigo Road in the Isla Vista area. Here is the site plan of the proposed project. This shows the location of the residence located at 6897 Trigo Road, where the appellant resides, outlined in orange, and the existing pole in the public right-of-way that the facility is proposed to be located on in red. These are photo simulations of the proposed facility. The equipment is proposed to be located on an existing...
All right. We are, we're back from our break and we will take, Madam Clerk, can you please read departmental item number one into the record?
Chair Lavignino and members of the board, departmental item number one is from the Planning and Development Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Erickson appeal of the County Planning Commission approval of Verizon Wireless at Camino Mallorca, case numbers twenty-three APL forty, twenty-two DVP twenty-three, twenty-two CDP one-four-six, and nineteen VAR two-two-two, which consists of an appeal of a director, director level development plan and concurrent coastal development permit, and the Associated Board of Architectural Review application to allow the installation of a new small cell wireless facility on an existing utility pole located within the public right-of-way of Camino Mallorca, and this is in the second district. And Chair Lavignino, members of the board, before we proceed, I do have two documents that we received after our noon deadline on Friday, March first, to be voted into the record and accepted. The first is a public comment letter from Sarah Erickson, received Friday, March first at one-thirty PM, and the second is an additional public comment letter received from Jean Turner on behalf of Hildegard Lagerquist, and that was received Saturday, March second at nine forty-nine PM. And again, if we can get those two items voted into the record.
Can I get an motion to accept those items?
So moved?
Second. Moved by Supervisor Hartman, seconded by Supervisor Nelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will bring those into the record. And since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, we will call also for ex parte communications. Does anybody have anything that we need to report?
I have no ex parte communication.
Neither do I.
Oh, yes, I do. My staff and I did a site visit with the appellant and her father on February twenty-eighth. My staff met with Representative of Verizon also on February twenty-eighth, and I discussed with my planning commissioner and the planning and development staff.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
I, I met via Zoom phone with the applicant last, or with the appellant last week. I have not met with the applicant, though my staff have asked questions.
Okay, and I have nothing to report. So we will be following a time-certain presentation list here. We'll start with the staff presentation. You have ten minutes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, today I have Willow Brown, who is the planner on the case that's been appealed. We have Joe Dargle, Supervising Planner, and Travis Seawards, Deputy Director. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown to make her presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Willow Brown. I will be presenting the Erickson appeal of Verizon Wireless at Camino Mallorca. The project is located in the right-of-way of Camino Mallorca, adjacent to six-eight-nine-seven Trigo Road in the Isla Vista area. Here is the site plan of the proposed project. This shows the location of the residence located at six-eight-nine-seven Trigo Road, where the appellant resides, outlined in orange, and the existing pole in the public right-of-way that the facility is proposed to be located on, in red. These are photo simulations of the proposed facility. The equipment is proposed to be located on an existing forty-four-foot wood utility pole in the public right-of-way and consists of an antenna, two radio units, and a Verizon fiber line. The attachments would not increase the height of the pole. I will now summarize the project's history. In 2020, the project was first reviewed by the South Board of Architectural Review, and the original application for the current location at six-eight-nine-seven Trigo Road was submitted. Between January and March 2021, the project was reviewed by the PC, which ultimately directed the applicant to review alternate locations. Verizon then withdrew their application to review the suggested locations and submitted a new application for one of the suggested sites. The Sbar denied the project at the new site, and staff informed Verizon that it could not be supported as it did not meet the requirement to mount the facility on an existing operational utility pole. Verizon conducted a robust alternative site analysis consisting of fourteen alternative sites and ultimately revised the project proposal to go back to the original location. In June 2023, staff approved the director-level development plan, and the Sbar denied the design review application. Both actions were appealed to the PC. In December 2023, the project was heard by the PC, and they took action to approve the project. This action was then appealed to the Board of Supervisors. I will now go through the appeal issues. In the first appeal issue, the appellant asserts that there has been an abuse of discretion. They claim that there are inconsistencies in who Verizon says the facility will serve and what the propagation maps show. In response, staff finds that the hearing before the board is de novo, and therefore any claims related to abuse of discretion at the PC hearing are not relevant to the board's decision. Further, the PC hearing complied with the Brown Act and County Planning Commission Procedures Manual. The applicant has submitted all required application materials, including propagation maps showing the facility will serve the residential areas of West Isla Vista. In the second appeal issue, the appellant claims staff encouraged the applicant to apply at the current location despite prior rejection by the PC. They also state that the location is not least intrusive. Finally, they claim Verizon was allowed to postpone a hearing date when they were not given the same opportunity. In response, staff finds that the project was not denied by the PC but was withdrawn to review other locations as directed. Additionally, the applicant did a robust alternative site analysis and determined that this is the best location for the facility. There is not a finding for the location to be the least intrusive, however, the PC found the project consistent with all required findings for project approval. With regard to the appellant's request for a later hearing date, PND staff followed standard practice for scheduling the hearing. Verizon requested a continuance, and the PC granted the continuance request. Both the appellant and applicant have the option to request a continuance from the PC. In the third appeal issue, the appellant claims the facility will not be in conformance with the scale and character of the existing community and is on the path to recreational areas. In response, staff finds that the facility is in conformance with the scale and character of the community, because it is small in size, will be mounted on an existing pole, and is consistent with other facilities throughout the community. There is no requirement prohibiting facilities adjacent to recreational areas, and it will not interfere with the use of any recreational area or access to the coast. In the fourth appeal issue, the appellant claims the project is inconsistent with Article Two because it is substantially visible and is in close proximity to two other substantially visible facilities. In response, staff finds that the facility is not substantially visible. A facility is considered to be substantially visible if it stands out as a conspicuous feature of the landscape or breaks the skyline when viewed with the naked eye. As shown in the photo simulations, the facility blends with the background and does not break the skyline. It will be parallel to Camino Mallorca, in line with the existing utility lines, and will not stick out as a conspicuous feature when looking towards the coast or the mountains. In the fifth appeal issue, the appellant claims the project is inconsistent with an ordinance requirement prohibiting antennas from protruding more than two feet horizontally, and the CEQA exemption does not apply because CEQA only allows exemptions for limited numbers of new small facilities, and this is now the third small facility in less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet. In response, staff finds that there is no requirement prohibiting antennas from protruding more than two feet horizontally unless it is facade-mounted, which this antenna is not. Additionally, the CEQA exemption applies because each application for a telecommunications facility is analyzed for CEQA impacts and similar development in the vicinity that is developed over time in conformance with applicable ordinance, policy, and FCC regulations will not result in a cumulative, cumulatively significant impact under CEQA. In the sixth appeal issue, the appellant states that the project is inconsistent with a section of Article Two requiring a facility in a residential zone to prove that the area proposed to be served would not otherwise be served by the carrier, and that Article Two states the director shall establish and maintain a list of information that must accompany every application for telecommunications facilities, including lists of other nearby facilities. In response, staff finds that there is no requirement to demonstrate that the area would not otherwise be served by the carrier. Additionally, the applicant submitted all the information required for a telecommunications application with the initial submittal, and the information demonstrates compliance with all applicable Article Two requirements. In summary, the project is consistent with all applicable Article Two regulations for telecommunications facilities and complies with all FCC regulations. The facility will be compatible with the surrounding area and will not impact views of the coast or access to the coast or recreational areas. The facility will be located on an existing pole, will be painted brown to match the pole, and will not increase the height of the pole. The proposed project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA Section one-five-three-oh-three, new construction or conversion of small structures. Staff recommends that your board deny the appeal, case number twenty-three APL forty, make the required findings for approval of the project, determine the project is exempt from CEQA, and approve the project, which consists of approval of the development plan and coastal development permit, and preliminary and final design review approval, subject to the conditions included as attachment two of the board letter. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lavignino. I'm just kind of curious, you know, we're also, one of the goals sometimes in governments is to underground some of these poles. So I know that there's like Rule Twenty-eight monies that come from the utilities that go towards that. How does that work with a pole like this that now is going to have a dual use? So if in the future, if there are funds available to go and do undergrounding, which is something that I'm a big fan of, what would happen to the use on this? Would that prohibit a future undergrounding project?
Supervisor Nelson, through the chair. It's a good question. Obviously, the cellular facilities need to be mounted in the air to be able to work, and we have a lot of them across the county. So I presume additional poles would have to be erected if they were going to underground utilities to be able to mount those facilities. But I have not run into that before, so...
There's not a lot of funds to do it, so that hasn't happened too often.
Yeah.
But I think it is kind of a goal that we try to get those underground. I mean, they're, it's kind of an antiquated way of doing it, and I think it's, you know, we're seeing that in other parts of the state that we're undergrounding utilities more and more, and that's, so I'm just, just curious about that and any permanency that comes with this project because now it's, has an antenna on it or that would prohibit future undergrounding opportunities, and so that's why the question came from.
Any other questions? Supervisor Caps?
Perhaps to illustrate the answer to that, could you go back to the photo of the surrounding area, just how populated it is with overground wires?
Yeah.
Not, let's see.
Back.
Back, I think.
Back.
I appreciate, I definitely appreciate the comment, especially in Isla Vista. It is a lot of wires, a lot of low wires. Again, I don't have the technical term for that. I know that shoes are often involved, but, but it is, it is quite, it is conspicuous, to use the word that's in the presentation, of, of the amount of, of wires that are in Isla Vista. Again, I don't think that's up for debate at this moment, but I appreciate the comment.
Supervisor Williams?
I just had some questions about why some of the alternative sites were deemed equivalent of intrusive. And, you know, I guess the first one I thought of was the ones on Fortuna, but that may have something to do with the Recreation and Park District allowing that as a site. What about the one that was going to be the proposed site that was across the street from this one that was chosen? Is that deemed equivalent in intrusiveness only because that's not an existing pole? Or what's, tell me about that.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Williams, the applicant will discuss alternative locations, but the pole across the street is within the eucalyptus trees. You can see them on the photo simulations on the right. And to get past the, some of the eucalyptus trees are up to seventy feet in height, so the alternative site analysis said a pole would have to be around seventy-five feet tall for the service to get past the eucalyptus trees. And also, in the alternative site analysis for the poles along Fortuna Road, they are five hundred feet north of the proposed facility, and so if they were placed there, they're away from the center of the coverage objective, and so it's a less effective network design and would eventually require additional small cell, small cell facilities in the vicinity to, to serve the objective.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nelson?
Just one more question. So this is, who owns the current pole? And it's in a, I guess, a right-of-way, a public right-of-way? Is that where it's at? So does Verizon end up paying a fee to County Public Works here? How does that exactly work, and what are the numbers there?
So, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Nelson, I believe it's an SCE poll. We can have the applicant confirm and what the actual fees are to the, to the county for right-of-way space.
Great, thank you.
All right, we're now ready for our appellant. Sarah Erickson, for ten minutes, please.
And Chair Lavignino, members of the board, just for the record, Sarah is presenting via Zoom.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Is, at the last meeting, the PowerPoint was presented by staff. Is that going to happen at this meeting?
Yes, Sarah, we will, we are pulling that up as we speak. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. I'll just say, next slide.
Okay, we'll hold your time until we get our presentation, your presentation up here.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're on the first slide. Yep.
Okay. All right, hello supervisors. My name is Sarah Erickson, and I'm representing my father, Ron Erickson, who is at dialysis. We represent over twenty long-term community members on the west end of Isla Vista who oppose a wireless facility being placed directly adjacent to our residential properties on very small lots. We are not anti-five G. In fact, most of my family members are Verizon customers, as are many of our neighbors, and we have reliable cellphone reception and data service currently with Verizon. This facility would be the third within a very short blocks width. We want Verizon to choose a less intrusive location than the one proposed, and there are multiple alternative locations that are viable and less intrusive. There are three poles on Fortuna Lane, County Public Right-of-Way, and the overwhelming majority of our community, nearly everyone would support and not oppose this facility being placed on any of those three, three poles. I know there are two residents who have said that they don't want an Fortuna, but everyone else will stand down because those three locations are straight with the way from a residence, which has been the community's united position. Next slide, please. My family moved to the Trigo House in Isla Vista in nineteen eighty-six. I was raised in that house. The west end of Ivy is mostly single-family homes owned by the residents. My father, Ron, still lives there. Since he's retired and has chronic health conditions and a compromised immune system, he spends the majority of his time at home. I visit him several times a week. We have known the plethora of our other long-term residents on the west end of Ivy for decades. Since 2020, our community has continued to express our concerns and needs about these facilities being placed too close to our windows and living spaces for primarily aesthetic purposes. Over the past four years, so many local long-term residents have sent emails, attended hearings and meetings, and spent a lot of time opposing this location. The city of Santa Barbara has a telecom ordinance which gives the planning department the power to turn down applications and find better aesthetic locations. Many cities have minimum setbacks from residential windows for these facilities. Santa Barbara categorizes a location within five hundred feet as the most, the most discouraged location for these facilities, and that it shall not be placed within twenty feet of a residential dwelling window. This location would not be approved if it was in the city of Santa Barbara. Besides aesthetics, fire hazards, and decreased property values are concerns as well. The picture here is of a eucalyptus branch that fell on a utility line and pole on Camino Mallorca, which is common, as is UCSB students throwing articles of clothing or shoes on utility lines. What are the fire risks if a eucalyptus branch or sweatshirt were thrown on one of these facilities? Next slide, please. The planners in their agenda letter to the supervisors for this appeal all wrote that I falsely asserted that the current project location has been denied by Planning Commission, and wrote that I am incorrect. This is just semantics in an effort to complete the issue because while technically Verizon withdrew their original location, original application at this location, the reason was because the planning commissioners asked them to find another location because they were not in approval of the facility being placed here. So essentially, this location was denied and rejected. The Chair of the Planning Commission, John Park, invested a lot of time walking with our community to look at better sites and try to understand concerns on both sides. At the January 2021 hearing, John Park said on public record that he did not like this site and could not vote in favor or support it. His opposition to this location hasn't wavered since then. Next slide, please. The term "less intrusive" is used throughout Verizon's report on potential alternate locations to indicate why a different location cannot be chosen. This term is not a legally defined term and is subjective. Who gets to define what is less intrusive? Do the people that live in this community have a say in it? There are six alternative locations in Verizon's report that most everyone in the community will support. For several of the alternate locations, Verizon uses this term with very little substantive justification. The Verizon reports do not prove that the current proposed location is the only location. A planner has stated on public record that Verizon exhausted all efforts to find alternate locations, and this is the only location. This is not accurate. Last year, our community was shocked to learn that the planners recommended Verizon submit yet another application here at the exact same place that everyone had already opposed or would not support. John Park, in the last hearing a few months ago, said this is the worst location for this facility, and there were other locations that would be better. He also stated his disappointment in how Verizon and the county planners have handled this process with the community. The Architectural Review Board members unanimously denied this location multiple times, including last year in June. It feels like Verizon is using the ticking time shot clock to put pressure on the county to get any location approved, and since they spent so much time on this one, it appears the planners and Verizon are endeavoring to use legal loopholes to ram it through despite the overwhelming opposition. This is one of our grievances in this appeal. It is not a grievance regarding a Planning Commission hearing. It is a grievance about the entire process that has got us to this point, including the planning staff responses in their agenda letter to the supervisors for today's meeting. Our request does not seem unreasonable. Please put it on a pole on Fortuna Road. Next slide, please. We think the current location is most intrusive. On the left side of this picture is my father, Ron's bedroom, where he spends the majority of his time resting. Ron has stage-four cancer and has been on dialysis for over ten years. Note that all pictures Verizon presents on this location fail to include how close Ron's bedroom will be to the antenna that will stick out, pointing towards his bedroom. The planner said the edge of the antenna would be ten feet from the roof line. It would be at eye level to my father on a regular chronic basis. I think any reasonable person would agree that aesthetically, this is not appropriate. Would you want one of these facilities right outside your bedroom? If the facility were to be placed at the other side of Ron's house in the bathroom downstairs, the facility would actually be further away from Ron's bedroom than this pole. If approved, it would be as if this cell facility were inside our home. That is why we want a location at least a street with a way. If we were to sell this property, it is reasonable to assume that the property value would be discounted because who wants one of these facilities that close to a bedroom? Next slide, please. This is an existing This is an existing wireless facility, just a short block up from the location. Um, it is substantially visible. As Bahav Nelson and Lor cap referenced, um, uh, we would love undergrounding because Ivy's already littered with telephone poles and wires. Um, and adding these small cell facilities just exasperates an aesthetic and livability issue that already needs to be addressed. Next slide, please. This is um, this existing facility, just a half a block up. Even though it's brown, um, it is still sticks out like a sore thumb and substantially visible. Next slide, please. These next several slides list some of the coastal zoning ordinances that we do not think are being met. Public viewing areas include public roads, trails and recreational areas. And these facilities shouldn't be substantially visible from these types of areas. Um, John Park at uh, the early hearings in twenty twenty-one talked about the views to the ocean that you can see if you stand anywhere on Camino Mallorca. And if you turn around, there are sweeping views of the mountains and agreed it is quite a lovely view worth preserving. Um, the picture in the planner's presentation um, appears to not be in scale and then looks a little stretched and it's skewed. It doesn't fully capture what it feels like when you're standing on the street headed to the ocean. Uh, next slide, please. I'm gonna blow through these. I just wanna, you know, for those who don't know, a lot of people think Isla Vista is just student housing, but there's been significant preservation by the Ivy Parks District, UCSB and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We love our community and feel fortunate that we're between several parks, preserves, open spaces, natural reserve and the largest protected marine area in our region. Next slide, please. Um, this is a list of all the parks and open spaces. Um, if then it just a few blocks, we've got six different parks and open spaces. That's twenty-eight acres of open space preserved. Next slide, please. Just two blocks away, um, leads you to the staircase on the beach with one of the best sunsets and surf spots. Um, and uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is an aerial um, that shows the uh, Coal Oil Point Reserve to the left and the pathways to get out there. We don't think um, having three of these cell facilities in a short blocks distance on one of the main local roads to access these picturesque recreational areas are in scale and character of the existing community that we call home. Next slide, please. Looks like I'm running out of time. Um, so I think I'll just wait to the rebuttal to.
Okay, thank you very much. I think you got your point across too, Sarah. Thank you. So um, yeah, you'll have five minutes during rebuttal. So Tricia Knight from the applicant will have ten minutes, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Tricia Knight, representing Verizon Wireless this morning. Um, I will give a brief presentation. Uh, I hear a lot of discussion about the alternatives that were presented with the project. You have a couple uh, copies of both the original alternative analysis as well as a supplemental analysis that includes those polls on Fortuna Road that have been mentioned. I'm gonna go through and start my presentation. I'm prepared to go through each one of those in detail if you so desire. If one comes up and we wanna go into more detail um, on those particular polls. Um, I also just wanna make note, I've got um, Mr. David Watauski uh, attending remotely as well as our radio frequency engineer, should any questions come up about the report or coverage. Um, so I'll go ahead and start my presentation. Staff did a really great job, Willow, next slide, please, of summarizing how far we've come. We have um, you know, started in twenty nineteen at this original location, um, have meandered through um, meetings with uh, the community and planning commission members, uh, withdrawing applications, submitting new applications, subsequently being denied by Sbar twice, um, planning commission um, once, and then arrived back at this. Uh, in that, in that timeframe, it's noteworthy that the ordinance for telecommunications uh, facilities was revised. And so when we went to go resubmit, we had new ordinance requirements that we had to meet. One of them being existing structures preferred over new structures. So the previous application that we had pursued after all of those random meetings um, was a new poll, a streets with away from residential at a, at a vacant lot. Um, unfortunately, Sbar denied that application as well. So we circled back to the um, application that's before you today, um, which was approved in December and subsequently appealed. Next slide, please, Willow. Thank you. Uh, just giving a brief summary of the um, design of the pole. It's forty-four feet in height. To answer your question with respect to leases or, or how it all works for locating on a pole, these are owned by the Joint Pole Association. So um, SCE is a member of that, as well as most carriers are members as well. So what that means, it's a utility, and then we are also a public utility. And so there's an agreement that if there's a pole that's available, that meets the safety requirements, that's structurally sound enough to do so, then we can locate on that pole. And so it's just a utility agreement amongst utility to utility. So I hope that answers your question. Um, this particular project is small in scale. Um, the antenna is two feet tall by fourteen six inches in diameter, and it's located at a height of thirty feet eight inches. The radios are concealed in that small shroud um, at a height of seventeen feet six inches and measures seventy inches tall by twenty inches wide and twenty inches deep. Um, there's very limited space in the right of way on the sidewalks in Isla Vista, which is the reason for the um, pole mounted, pole mounted equipment. Next slide, please, Willow. This gives a little bit more, you have a um, copy of the site plans within uh, your packet. Uh, if you have, if you wanna have any questions about more of the details, but this gives just a little bit more clarity on how at uh, each level of the pole, the equipment is um, mounted. Next slide, please. And now we talk a little bit about coverage and why it's needed. Um, you will notice the area circled um, that is yellow illustrates the gap in coverage. When you're talking about small cells and the areas that they're serving, if you look to the east, you'll see the area in green. Um, that is overwhelmed quite often, meaning that there's lanes on the highway that get overwhelmed by the um, dense population in Isla Vista, which can be um, a concern, not only when special events or anything are going on, but also during emergency situations where that may be an issue. So this pole, if we go to the next slide, please. If uh, this is approved and constructed, you would see that significantly um, also completes that service gap as well as offloading that capacity from that exhausted facility in the eastern area. Next slide. So this is also how it relieves that what we call mid-band capacity, which is like those lanes on the highway that I was talking about. So you can see you've got that east um, uh, facility that's in existence now, that is often overwhelmed and can't reach into the western region of Isla Vista. And if this project was in fact approved and constructed, you can see that that um, gap and also the capacity issue is relieved. Next slide, please. So as a part of our alternative site analysis that's in your packet, there's fourteen different alternatives. Um, the most recent ones are in the most northern section of this um, map here, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, which are the Fortuna Road um, poles that we were asked to consider at the tail end of the um, application as well as right before planning commission. And so I'm gonna go to the next slide, please. So they're ruled out uh, for various reasons. And so I'm just gonna go through them um, briefly as the categories. You either have lack of pole space. Uh, Southern California Edison has um, separation requirements that require two feet from any communication line, six feet from any power line, two feet from any light, and they do not allow locating on poles with guy wires. So as we meander through this um, uh, table here, you can see we have the lack of pole space where we can't meet those safety requirements. A taller pole is required, which the ordinance asks that we not only locate on a existing structure first, but ideally no height increases. Um, we've got those safety rules that I just spoke of, denial by Sbar, not in the right of way, which is we are a utility locating on a public utility. That agreement with the Joint Pole Association needs to be a pole located in the right of way. And then less intrusive is also a standard that's set by the F, by the federal government when it comes to citing these facilities. And so less intrusive is if I've got a, you know, seventy-five foot pole in the middle of a residential neighborhood versus a pole of forty-four feet in height, you can use your own discretion, but you would want to conclude that the forty-four foot, foot pole, existing pole would be of less intrusive. And if we can go to the last slide. So during um, the, before the planning commission hearing, uh, we were asked to look at those poles on Fortuna Road, uh, which are just across the street of this residential neighborhood, um, outside that open space. And we uh, sent letters to the surrounding community and along that road, asking if they, if there was a pole to be installed on any of those um, existing light or uh, utility poles, would they have any concerns? And we had two in opposition and one um, in support. And so more illustrating that in all of these moves that we've made, there is opposition in locations at each one of those. And we feel that the location that you're considering today is the least intrusive. With my two minutes, um, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the alternative site analysis. Willow, if we could do the toggle from the, um, it's gonna put us at that table, the beginning of the project that goes through the reasons for each one of the poles. Getting excluded, sorry, finding mine. There we go. Okay. So it's the table, there you go, perfect. So I'm just gonna go through, so we'll have to toggle back and forth a little bit on the original alternative site analysis. I know, sorry, it's a little tricky. Um, do we have that one? That the alternative site analysis to toggle back and forth? Just it has pictures. Um, and we can go through it in your packet, I guess, if that's easier. Or I can defer to see if you have any specific questions about specific alternatives, and I can come and speak to those. And with that, I'll save the rest of my time for just that.
Perfect, okay, thank you. I think that's.
Thank you.
Better use of the time. Okay, um, we now go to public comment. Do we have any requests from the public to speak on this matter?
Chair Lavigno and members of the board, yes, we have ten requests to speak on this item. And we are going to begin on Zoom with Jay Grundle, to be followed by Maureen Cruzen. Jay? And Jay, we have unmuted you on our end. If you can please unmute on your end to provide your comments. Alrighty, we will return to Jay momentarily. Um, we will now go to Maureen Cruzen to be followed by Bruce Murdock. Maureen? Oh, we just lost Maureen. Um, we will now go to Bruce Murdock to be followed by Dwayne Bonham. Bruce? Bruce, if you can please unmute yourself to provide your comments.
There we go. I finally got it going. Okay, uh, are we ready?
Yes, please proceed with your comments.
I'm uh, Bruce Murdock. I'm a fifty-two-year resident in the R-one single-family area of Isla Vista. I'm also a uh, came there in nineteen sixty-three. I'm an electrical engineer, having graduated in electrical engineering from UC Berkeley in nineteen sixty-three. I have thirty-five years and of industrial experience designing military electronics, including military radio equipment. I now have an electrical engineering consulting business where I design, build and deliver electronic products, called Channel City Development Company, also known as CCDC. Uh, I don't support the approval of case number twenty-three ABC triple zero forty, i.e. denied by Verizon. In order to achieve higher data rates for four, five G without increasing the assigned bandwidth, the radiated, radio energy must increase. Website fiveghub.us says the typical uh, maximum RF energy radiated is a hundred and twenty watts. That's plus twenty point eight dBm. That's logarithmic. Every time you go down ten dB in, in logs, you go down a factor of ten in power. Uh, other five G antenna locations located in foliage have caused the foliage to ignite and burn. I mean, a hundred and twenty watts is a lot of power. Therefore, locations on utility poles in foliage are rejected. That's always been, that's already, you already know that. The proposed location for this transmitting and receiving antenna is twenty-six feet. Uh, the pole is twenty-six feet away from the occupied second-story bedroom. Yeah, the antenna is about twenty-four feet away from that bedroom. A previously proposed node, node location adjacent to a buildable vacant lot at the corner of Sabato Tardí and Camino Lindo, which has, that property has a water meter, was rejected because of its proximity to a home that could be constructed there. It would be about ten feet away. The lot is owned by Nancy Vivere at sixty-eight, sixty-seven Sabato Tardí. Uh, there are several other locations in R-one where a node could be located on a utility pole in the public right of way that are not immediately adjacent to occupied homes. You've already heard about that. Uh, the big thing, the elephant in the room is Verizon wants to provide five G cell service to UCS, UCSB's faculty housing, which is located on university property immediately west of the R-one housing area. Put the node there. I learned in an email from um, Lisa that uh, Sarah, I mean, what I'm saying, that a guy named Danny Sweeney of UCSB wants to talk to Verizon regarding a location on UCSB land. Boy, everybody wins. So in a previous uh, board activity on this subject, I've asked, I have, this is several times. I've asked for radio frequency link analysis. I'm an engineer, I can read that stuff. I can understand it, particularly the five G radio frequency power that would illuminate the second-story bedroom at sixty-eight ninety-seven Sa- Trico Road.
I'm sorry, but your time's up.
Never been received. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go to Dwayne Bonham to be followed by David Watauski. Dwayne?
Hello.
Hi, Dwayne, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Dwayne Bonham, RF engineer for Verizon Wireless. I just wanted to let everybody know with the Board of Supervisors that I am available for any questions that may arise, and I will let things proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. We will now go to David Watauski to be followed by Jeremy Stroop. David?
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is David Witkowski. I'm an RF engineer that has been retained to speak to this matter. By way of uh, my credentials, I wanted to let you know that I am an electrical engineer. UC uh, graduated. I serve on the International Committee for Electromagnetic Safety, uh, the IEEE ICES, which actually sets the standard for RF safety. And that standard, uh, which is known as the C ninety-five, is adopted uh, by governments around the world, and it serves as the basis for regulatory standards such as those provided by the FCC. I also serve on the uh, IEEE Committee on Man radiation, which is an ad hoc group that works around the ICES and the C ninety-five. I, I have reviewed the electromagnetic engineering report, which was submitted for this site. I find no concerns with this. The levels are lower than the public exposure standard. They reach only approximately to the twenty-five percent level. It's important to recognize that the twenty-five percent level as set by the IEEE, C ninety-five and adopted by the FCC, actually provides a fifty dB margin uh, on top of the level at which an effect can be measured on the human body. Uh, people who are in homes nearby will not receive that level because the worst-case analysis that comes in with the EME specifically is to the outside of the building. But of course, the building itself will attenuate those signals. Uh, responding to Mr. Murdock's comment about a hundred and twenty watts being high power and igniting trees, that is not an effect that we see in the real world. The power levels from this site uh, are within tolerance, and I see no cause for concern. I'm available to you if you have any further questions. Thank you.
We will now go to Jeremy Stroop to be followed by Chris Muller. Jeremy? Jeremy, we have unmuted you on our end. If you can please unmute on your end to provide your comments. Jeremy Stroop? Alrighty, we will now go to Chris Muller, and then we will return to the Santa Barbara Hearing Room with Jean Lagerquist Turner. Chris? Chris Muller? All righty, we will now return to the Santa Barbara hearing room with Jean Lagerquist Turner to be followed by Chris Gallary. Jean?
Good morning. I'm Jean Turner and I'm here to represent myself and my mom, who has been a resident of Isla Vista since 1961. She still lives in the family home. And I have three reasons why I think this appeal should be approved. I don't think the process has been fair. Due process has not been followed. And this location at 6897 Trigo Road was previously denied. So it violates collateral estoppel doctrine, which is essentially double jeopardy. And I don't think that the Planning Commission and others have listened to the valid concerns because like the location in faculty housing that Bruce Murdock recommended is on a light pole standard. It is not near any, not too close to any of the faculty housing. It is located in a position where it can serve them better. It would be on a light standard. I've looked at photographs on the internet of 5G facilities that are on light standards and it seems like it would be nice and high away from the eucalyptus trees, which are so problematic and would solve a lot of other issues. The only problem with it is it's not in a public right-of-way. But I know that UCSB's main campus has several towers, antennas and stuff located there because there's a high demand for data. This, this need for a wireless 5G facility was brought about because of UCSB faculty housing needing more data transmission capability during COVID. So I think locating it on the other side of the, of the tree line would better service the faculty there and would be better for future needs of, of data transmission. I also looked at the county guidelines. Sarah brought this up, but if there were, the city guidelines categorizes the 6897 Trigo location as the most discouraged location possible. So, you know, I urge the county to develop a set of, of regulations for placement of 5G facilities. Looking on the internet too, it's like, it's like the new lawn ornament is a 5G facility. I think that's what is happening with this location. It's way too close to a residence. And then I just wanted to emphasize that there are concerns, safety, there's fire safety, health, aesthetics and property values. And the location that Mr. Murdoch identified at faculty housing. Thank you.
We will now go to Chris Gallary to be followed by Nancy Vivaret. Chris?
Good morning, Supervisors. Excuse me. I'm here as a co-owner of 6897 Trigo Road. Sarah is my stepdaughter. I and my husband and family and numerous members of the community have opposed this location for over four years. The proposed location is visible on the utility pole right next to the house. It would be unsightly and eye-catching to anyone walking up or down Camino Mallorca. It's the westernmost edge of Isla Vista and it leads to the open space, the beach, the bluff-top trail heading out to Coal Oil Point. It would be also within close view of our home, as you know. Isla Vista has long been treated as an area where things are tolerated because the perception is that everyone in IV is a temporary resident and has no real stake in the community. The west end of IV, which is an R1 neighborhood, has many long-term owner-occupied homes. We've lived here since 1985, but several of our neighbors have been here longer. Along Camino Mallorca, which is the street where this utility would be placed. I've lost my, my space here. Okay, along Camino Mallorca, five of the six homes are owner-occupied and have been for decades. On Del Playa, Sabato Tardí and Trigo Road, the streets that connect to Camino Mallorca, as well as other nearby streets, there are more long-term residents who have also always valued the natural beauty of Camino Mallorca, which leads to the natural open field. It has a maintained trail and it's a great surfing spots are out there. So I ask you not to allow this popular walking and biking area to become spoiled with another Verizon box. I don't understand why the county of Santa Barbara would be eager to satisfy Verizon's desire for a convenient, cheap solution for their expansion instead of the community's request to preserve the natural beauty of the area. There are already two similar facilities within a block of that location and we don't want a third on this short gateway to the multi-use recreational area. Other California jurisdictions have stood up for their residents and created design guidelines for these facilities that prevent them from being located so close to residential space. We deserve nothing less. We don't want to set a precedent that the west end of Isla Vista isn't, is the easy go-to place for them, especially within 20 feet or so of a bedroom window.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you.
We will now go to Nancy Vivaret, who is our final speaker. Nancy?
Good morning. Thank you for your time and attention. I really appreciate that. My name is Nancy Vivaret. It's actually Dr. Nancy Vivaret. I've been a plant ecologist with the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden for the last 50 years. In that period of time, I have studied climate conditions and change in vegetation. That's my area of specialty. In that period of time, I have been following patterns of rainfall in Santa Barbara. Over that period of time, and of course, the commercial people knew this all along. They called it the midwinter drought. We actually have a bimodal period of rainfall, have had in the past, where it rains for a while and then it stops for at least four weeks. The temperature goes up and the farmers have to irrigate their field. That's the midwinter drought. In 150 years of watching this data, we have never missed a midwinter drought until this year. This year, we did not have a midwinter drought. That meant, oh, we've only had 15 inches of rain. That is nothing for this area. But if it doesn't dry out in between, then areas like Isla Vista, which is a wetland and has been forever, we have clay lenses which don't let the water go through. Since you saw the property in November, on the night of February 8, 9, when the windstorm came through, one telephone pole went down on Abrego. One very large, old, shallow-rooted eucalyptus went down at the corner of Sueño and Camino Corto, blocking access to the western end of Isla Vista. And then a second eucalyptus tree went down on Stork by the post office, across Stork, blocking access to the fire department and blocking access to Isla Vista. I wanted to go out and film whether or not those high trees are actually going across and touching the pole as it currently exists on Mallorca, which is lined with these shallowly rooted, very large and very old eucalyptus. But as I started out the door, my phone rang. It was Southern California Edison. Move to the interior of your house and shelter in place. Do not attempt to leave your property. My pole was, the regular telephone pole at the end of my driveway, was leaning at 10%, 10 degrees. And it's in a wetland. That whole block is a high water table. When they came to replace the pole, when they dug the hole, it run, it filled with water. So they came again with a truckload of rocks and material to secure that pole.
Thank you. That is your time.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. We are in a new normal and it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Okay, that opens us up to the rebuttal response period. We'll have the applicant, I'm sorry, the appellant has five minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'd like to speak about the gap in coverage. In the January 2021 Planning Commission meeting, John Park, on public record, mentions talking to Verizon and learning that the primary focus for the facility was to enhance services for UCSB faculty housing. He called it the elephant in the room. And because faculty housing didn't want it on their property due to aesthetics, Verizon was looking for a location nearby that would be able to serve them. Most recently, at the last Planning Commission hearing, an engineer said that the trees would block reception and UCSB faculty housing wouldn't be served. And the propagation maps that supposedly demonstrated a gap in coverage reference mobile cellphone coverage and that there's capacity exhaustion that leads to connectivity issues and call failures. And, and, but then in the last hearing, the engineer agreed with us that, that the cell reception is fine and that there aren't dropped calls. And so it's, this is part of that grievance of like, what is the purpose of this facility? For after four years, like we still are confused. And, and back to one of the points that I made in my appeal is, is ask that the jurisdiction, that there, that the cities and counties recognize that they do have jurisdiction to ask for proof, further proof. The City of Santa Barbara Code authorizes the director and their discretion to select and retain an independent consultant with specialized training, experience and expertise in telecommunications and issues in connection with any permanent application for telecom facilities. So Santa Barbara gives their decision-makers jurisdiction to request further proof. Those propagation maps and the statement, I can write, like, laymen don't really understand it very well. I'm sure the planners also are not experts, as are the supervisors. And so it, it makes sense to me that it would be in the best interest to really make sure that it's clear that there actually is a gap and what is the purpose of this facility. On the, the poles on Fortuna Road, that the overwhelming majority, except for two people, will, were going to stand down. Please put a pole, put a, put a facility on one of those three Fortuna Road poles. The alternative analysis that Verizon put together said because the replacement poles on the Fortuna Road locations are between 41 and 44 feet, that they're not less intrusive. And I, it doesn't make sense to me. The replacement pole at this location is going to be 44 feet. So 41 feet, 44 feet, that's all the same. Today was mentioned that, that wouldn't be sufficient coverage for what their objective is. And we're not clear what their objective is. It's just footflop. So that's, there's no, there hasn't been transparency around that. And I'd like to understand this SEQA that only allows a limited number of new small facilities. Could, could I understand that better? I mean, two of these facilities in a short blocks span seems like a limited number. It's starting to become more than a limited number. And three in just a short block span is a cluster. So that's, that's really the bulk of what I'd like to find out more about.
Okay, are you finished with your time?
Yes.
Okay. We are back to the applicant for five minutes for rebuttal.
And Chair Lavignino, members of the board, I would just like to note that the applicant did reserve two minutes. So I'm adding two minutes to the five minutes.
Thank you very much. With that time, I would like to answer a couple of the issues that were brought up during the public comment as well as the appellate's rebuttal. And then I'm going to defer to the board to see if you do want me to go over any specific. I can start going through and see how much time I have. So I'll start with that. None of this has been easy or cheap or we haven't gone about this lightly. Verizon doesn't go and spend all of this time looking for something that isn't very needed. When we're talking about capacity, this is infrastructure to us now. This isn't, most people have cell phones versus landlines. And so when it comes down to floods, fires, all of which Santa Barbara has had or any other of the emergencies on campus that we've seen, unfortunately, that, those, those lanes on that highway get overwhelmed and there's a need for more capacity. It's actually better from a strength in signal standpoint to have more facilities at a very low frequency than it would be to have a large facility at a higher power level. So that's what these small cells do. They're very low power. They're within the communities, closer to the users. Your phone does not have to operate as heavily to get that same signal because it's not going as far. And so we have done our due diligence in trying to reach out, move to alternate locations, meet with planning commissioners, coming to where we are now. And so I feel strongly that what we've presented before you and what staff has gone over shows you the best facility. 14 different alternatives were looked at. No matter where we are, we are going to find someone who's not going to be happy. But it does strengthen the infrastructure that is so needed when it comes to not only these students going in and out of their classrooms and everybody who moles around Isla Vista, but in a true emergency, we've, I don't know if you've heard most recently about networks going down where people cannot get a hold of anyone. And so if you have an alternate Verizon facility, a friend can get a hold of somebody, so on and so forth. So it's important to have all of these building blocks. And with that said, I'm just going to break into the alternative analysis just a little bit. So if we can, there we go. Thank you. And so I'm just going to sort of breeze over the, if there, and if you want anyone to stop at anyone particular, please, you know, just let me know. So number one is the existing facility before you today. And then we go down to number two on, I think, we can toggle back and forth. But anyway, the next one is an existing facility not far away. Once again, smaller facilities, lower power outage. So we've got the same type of design. You've got an antenna and then the, the lower box that holds the radios. And then if we go to the next slide, please. Another similar facility of the same design. The reasons we, these were ruled out, if you notice those separation requirements from the communication lines, other existing facilities. There's just simply not enough room on those poles to really locate two carriers. And so if you go down to the next one, number four at the bottom there, this is the one that's across the street, but it's a guide pole. And so SCE does not allow location on guide poles. We move to the next slide, please. This is where you get a better illustration of some of those separation requirements that we're talking about from existing communication. Power lines, number six has a light. There's two feet, so we can't separate from the lines and the light and locate on an existing structure. Moving down to the next slide, please, number seven. Thank you. There we go. Once again, we've got a light and some existing communication and crossarms. Number eight is a photo simulation of the standalone pole that we went to as a secondary application outside of this, a streets distance from the residential units to the, to the south. And this was the one that was denied by Sbar. And then moving to the next slide, please, we have number nine, which was one that we had submitted an application on just outside of this basketball hoop area here as a standalone pole. It's determined it was not in the public right-of-way. Once again, utility locating on a utility. And also initially, when we contacted, this is owned by County Parks and Rec, they indicated that they believed that we would be impeding that sports area by having a facility. Wanted to speak to us covering campus facility housing, UCSB facility housing. That is not the objective here, as you saw in those coverage maps. It's offloading that capacity to the, of that facility east, on the east side. And then also filling in the gap before the eucalyptus tree line. If that was reported in previous hearings, that has now been clarified and shown by those maps. And I believe, oh, and then, so that concludes that alternative site analysis. There's a supplemental analysis. And I believe, oh, and then, so that concludes that alternative site analysis. There's a supplemental analysis. That if, I don't know if it's readily available. There we are. So these are the Fortuna Road. We did this analysis before the Planning Commission hearing. And this really illustrates the existing facilities or the existing lines and the overloading of those poles. That would require a taller pole to get those separations. Number 12, you can see that light and all those existing lines. We can't get the separations or we'd need a taller pole. And then the next two slides, you'll see both have lights and just communication lines on them. And so this pole, no height increase, can meet the separations and meets those needs of the, to strengthen the network. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. If we have any, we'll call you back.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. This takes it back to staff. If there's anything you heard during the hearing that you'd like to address? I'll take care of that now.
Mr. Chair and Supervisors, I'll just reiterate that the facility meets all Article II requirements and FCC regulations, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board for comment and deliberation. Supervisor Capps.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the parties involved. This has been four long years of a lot of work and resources. I particularly appreciate Ms. Erickson going to bat for her childhood home and her alien father. I can understand that and see why. And I, and also the argument that things sort of get shoved into IV. And I, I, I understand that perception and I'm sympathetic to that argument. I do have a couple of questions for Verizon. You actually addressed a lot of them in my rebuttal. The question I had about UCSB, this being about faculty housing, I remember as a kid when that faculty housing was, was built. So you addressed that, I believe, in that map. And I just want to add a lay of the land is if you look on Zillow today, there are about four or five places right around this property where rents are 11,000, 14,000 because landlords are cramming in about 16 kids. So I just wondered if you could speak to the population density as opposed to the faculty housing, just how that's implicated with that coverage map.
With respect to who it's serving more of? Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and defer to Dwayne Bonham, who is on. He can speak to that very clearly. Does he need to raise his hand or anything? He's one of the speakers and I don't know, Dwayne, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, did you hear the question?
Yeah. Population density maps that I reviewed several years ago when we started this project showed population density in Isla Vista matching population densities that we'd see in San Francisco where housing is stacked vertically. It was some of the highest, it was the highest we have in the central coast. And outside of San Francisco was the highest I'd seen in any other areas. So you are, you are right that we do see landlords packing a large number of students into the facilities that are up for rent there. I would also like to speak to the thing of housing, the, the tree line along there creates kind of a, let's call it an RF fence. If I'm going to put something on the Isla Vista side, that's to cover the Isla Vista side to get onto the, the housing on the, I think that would be the west side of the tree line, I will have to have something on the west side of the tree line. One isn't going to cover the other. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. That does help. And the one, the one pole that is next to the tree line, I think you referred to that as a guide post. Can you just reiterate that, please? Where there isn't any existing utilities?
Yes, so it is an existing pole owned by Southern California Edison, but it has a guy wire that leads down the line. It holds the whole system together. And they do not allow locations of facilities such as wireless on guide poles.
And follow-up question on that. The point has been made about there's how many other boxes there are. Can you speak to, those are different companies, how that works, how you share the poles?
That is, the two that you looked at in that alternative site analysis, one of them is AT&amp;T and one of them is T-Mobile. So versus co-locating, you know, like we would normally see when telecom first came out, towers on a hillside, everyone kind of locating. These are usually one pole per carrier just to keep that, that small footprint.
Okay. Thank you. I, I believe I have a question now for staff that came up in the presentations of our change in ordinance where new, new utilities need to be put on existing poles. Can you just refresh me on that history and when that occurred?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Capps, the change in the ordinance was for the permit requirement. It was a conditional use permit when the facility was first applied for. And then it was shifted down to tier two, or tier two was shifted down to a director level development plan. But I believe the requirement to locate on an existing pole has, was already a requirement.
Okay. I have comments for later, but those are my questions. Thank you very much, Chair.
Supervisor Hartman.
I think this is for Planning and Development. There was an assertion that the City of Santa Barbara has design guidelines and that somehow that would be more protective or allow greater discretion. And I just wanted to comment about that.
Supervisor Hartman through the chair. We have looked at the Santa Barbara's standards and will be incorporating some objective standards into our new ordinance amendment, but there are some very clear guidelines, not design guidelines, but guidelines we have to work within from the FCC. But there are some objective standards that we can use, but they're not your typical design guidelines.
I see. So, so just so I understand, we're preempted by the federal law from doing very much. We have some discretion within aesthetics and, and other areas. So you're saying that we're now developing objective standards and they go beyond aesthetics?
That's correct.
To, could you just give us a hint?
I'm afraid that if I gave you a hint, I might be wrong about exactly what it is because I haven't seen any of it yet.
But it's not relevant to this case today.
That's correct. That's correct. And we will be, it looks like we're going to be in hearings in the fall on this. But there is some leeway as you, you know, we have some fairly strict guidelines that we have to follow through the FCC, but they do give us some leeway on a few things. And we are including objective standards so that we can leverage those for the community.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nelson, Lynn Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chair Levinino. I guess my, my comment, are you, sorry, were you in deliberations or?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, let me pass.
Okay. Supervisor Williams?
Well, I, I really wanted to concentrate and get a little bit more information on the Fortuna Alternatives 12, 13, and 14. I understand that the other one is on Recreation Park District Plan, so that's why that's really not viable, but my, from the map, it looked like the, these other threes are on the open space. Probably still owned by Recreation Park District or one of those acquisitions. But why, you know, just sort of intuitively, something that's across the street as opposed to on the residence side of the street seems like it would be less intrusive. And I understand that there may be some members of the public who don't want the Fortuna ones either, but why, and it may be that I don't understand what the, the criteria of less intrusive is, is attempting to articulate, but you know, why wouldn't, I understand that it's more of a hassle because you need to do a higher poll, but why, why, why wouldn't the ones across the street from residences as opposed to on the same side of the street not be less intrusive?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Williams, pursuant to the supplemental alternative site analysis, since the polls on Fortuna Road are not, they're next to the open space rather than within the center of the coverage objective, which is surrounded by more residents, residences, it's a less effective network design that would require additional small cell facilities in the vicinity eventually to serve the objective. And then I can let the applicant speak to additional information.
So the issue would be that it wouldn't be less intrusive because it probably would mean that there still needed to be another one done. Okay.
So you might have referenced the one I was going to ask about, the one, the one, I think it was number eight that was denied by the Sbar. It sounded like Verizon was okay with that location and who, so, so what happened at Sbar that would throw a monkey wrench into that location?
Mr. Chair, this would be a new poll, which doesn't meet the Article II requirement to co-locate on an existing pole if that's possible.
Okay. So is Article II ours or is that the federal? Okay, Article II is ours. And I know that that's kind of something we've pushed in the past to put, to try to co-locate and put on existing poles. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, let's open it up for deliberation. There's no other questions. Supervisor Capps, why don't you lead off?
Thank you again. Just want to repeat the appreciation for all the work and so many years and Ms. Erickson and her family for going to bat for their neighborhood. I do, for me, this raises a lot of extraneous but important issues that I believe Supervisor Nelson started off with was just as the overcrowding of Isla Vista with so many multiple wires that are sagging. It's incredibly dense area despite its natural habitat with amazing vistas and Surfers Points and eucalyptus, but yet it's, as we heard today, as dense as San Francisco. So that adds to the challenges here. I, as much as I am sympathetic to the appeal here, I have to deny it because of the policy set before us and the law, which is that it, it isn't conspicuous. It's, we can't just deny on, I don't, the aesthetics. So I'm going to uphold the staff's work as well as the Planning Commission and move to deny, but I just do again want to highlight the issues related to Isla Vista stemming from housing and overcrowdedness and the need to be diligent. I'm more curious about sort of how we deal with multiple utilities in the future and the design standards for that. So I appreciate the conversation moving in that, in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Levinino. I'm going to support Supervisor Capps in denying the appeal, but I do think that there's ongoing concerns there. You know, this is four years in the process and to go back to the starting gate on this for coverage would probably be something that would be ultimately a disservice to that community that needs to have that connectivity. I do think it raises questions though about the concentration of utilities on some of these poles. And I, I think that those ultimately, part of the co-op is through a franchise agreement with the county to use our county right of way for those. I think that's something as, as a board, we probably should take a look at. I'm sure that those agreements are really old. You know, if they were to build this tower somewhere else, they would be paying significant amount of funds to the property owner. Those probably aren't, we're not seeing those types of revenues back into the county and that's something I'm really interested in, in us exploring because I think that that's a lost opportunity. And with those funds, we could really invest in the right of way and maybe underground some of these facilities in the future. So, you know, I think that there's some public purposes here. I think also because these are probably the least cost options for these utilities. They're gravitating to these spots instead of maybe investing in other locations. So I think we as a board, maybe through CO's office, we can take a deeper dive with Public Works to look at some of these franchise agreements, make sure that they're up to date and that they're something that's paying something that's much more of a market rate because I think we'll get a different proposals in the future frankly, because I think, you know, that they'll be a little bit more careful about where they put these and make sure that they invest appropriately. But I think where we're at today under the current regulations, curtain franchise agreements and I'm ready to move forward, denying the appeal and grant approval.
Supervisor Hartman.
Yes, well, I, I agree with my colleagues on the board that it's kind of a rat's nest of wires in Isla Vista. And this case raises the issue as demand increases, where are they going to go? Where are, it seems to be more and more constrained and admittedly, I think the Verizon did a robust alternative analysis of, of sites. But there aren't many alternatives. I, I did, you know, eventually I think we'll have fiber optic underground and I recently heard on the radio that Verizon is going to have a space-based broadband where everyone, everywhere, anytime will be served. Maybe that will be, it's focused largely on underserved areas like Africa, but maybe that's the ultimate solution. But here we're stuck where the federal government has usurped much of our authority. We're very limited. I think there was a, an exhaustive analysis done of every other alternative that people could think of. And we just haven't been able to come up with a good one. So I, I too have to deny the appeal.
Supervisor Williams?
I agree with my colleagues that this brings up a number of issues that is hard to discern without further analysis. Like how much coverage, is enough coverage? Why, you know, you can't do more common carrier use? How many, how many companies really need to be, have a facility in a geographic area to have adequate emergency redundancy? That's a, that's a real outstanding question from this. So while I do feel that we're somewhat constrained because of the timeline and because of a lack of concrete alternatives here, or at least enough analysis to truly resurrect one of the alternatives. I'm not very happy about it and we'll pay a whole lot more attention to the objective standards and what, what we can do to kind of make this maybe easier for residents in the future.
And I'm going to join my colleagues, but I think this process is too long for the, for the lack of authority that we have on this board. I mean, I thought Verizon puts on, we've been saying four years, but it looked like you had a six-year. I mean, to go through something for six years and bring it to a board that we feel there's not a whole lot we can do about it just seems like a, an exercise in futility. And so we've got to take a look at some things. I also agree that it did a robust look around. Obviously, they have to have, find, find an area that works for the coverage, but I, I felt that did a good job doing that. And I also agree with Supervisor Nelson that undergrounding, I mean, when you drive through areas like Westlake and Thousand Oaks, you don't realize why you think it looks so nice there until you start looking around and you're like, wow, everything's, you know, they've undergrounded everything. And I recently went to Thailand and I actually took a picture. If we think we have a lot of wires, I am telling you that it, it is unbelievable what can happen in a third world country of how they get their electricity and cell coverage and all that. So I appreciate the fact that we have a process where we go through this and we analyze and we do these things because it does make a quality of life difference for everybody. And so with that, I will seek a motion.
I will move to deny the appeal.
Second?
Okay. With the other, is there other action on there? Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Chair Levinino and members of the board, yes, that would be to approve staff recommendations A through D to deny the appeal and grant de novo approval of the project.
Okay, perfect. And that was your motion and the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody for being here. We'll now be recessing to closed session. County Council, please read the items up for consideration today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. In closed session today, the board is scheduled to consider three cases of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to civil litigation. There are claims which are attached to the agenda item, which explain the three claims. And one item of anticipated litigation deciding whether to initiate litigation, one case. And the time estimate is 30 minutes.
30 minutes. We'll be back at around 12:40, 12:45, somewhere in there.
I got to show you this picture.
Wow. Actually, I gotta go find my ballot. I can't find it. No. All right. Welcome back. We're reconvening the meeting on March 5, 2024. County Council, can you please report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board. The Board met in closed session on three items of significant exposure to civil litigation with the claims that are attached to the agenda and one item of deciding whether to initiate civil litigation, and the Board took no reportable action.
All right. We're adjourned to Tuesday, March 12, 2024, in Santa Maria.